Calling to order the Needham Select Board meeting for July 25. And maybe we're ready now?
It's a cool effect.
Ready? I think. We don't have it yet. You don't have a thumbs up. You ready? Oh. I think that's good. Calling to order the Needham Select Board meeting for July 25. The first item on our agenda is public comment. And I was looking for Mr. Sherman. And I don't. We do not see Mr. Sherman, okay? Maybe Mr. Sherman will be here another night. The next item on our agenda, I'm going to just mention first, we did have a resolution that was delivered last week on Wednesday in celebration of Anne Hudson's 100 years young. So we wish to congratulate her on the event of her birthday. And I want to thank Kevin for going to deliver those salutations and greetings to her on that particular day. Then today is a proclamation for the 2023 Purple Heart Community. If I could ask Mr. Keen in his official duties to read the proclamation.
Sure, okay. Whereas the residents of the town Needham have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for service members who selflessly serve their country and our community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of service members from Needham who served in harm's way in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining that freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many Needham residents were awarded the Purple Heart for their sacrifice, having been wounded in action while engaged in combat. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit on August 7, 1782, in Newburgh, New York by General George Washington. The award was made of purple cloth shaped as a heart with the word merit sewn upon it. And whereas August 7 is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Appreciation Day. Now therefore, be it resolved that Needham be declared a Purple Heart community. And furthermore, be it resolved that August 7 be proclaimed Purple Heart Day in Needham. The Select Board encourages residents and businesses to display the American flag and recognize Purple Heart recipients honoring the service and sacrifice of our military personnel. Signed this 25th day of July 2023.
All in favor? Any opposed? It is so resolved. I would welcome our citizens joining us that evening at Memorial Field at 6:45 in the evening for that event. The next item on our agenda is to introduce the Building Commissioner. If I could invite Ms. King and Mr. Prondak forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see all of you. I'm thrilled to be here to introduce Joe Prondak. As you all know, our town is run by really talented staff, and so we're always excited to introduce new members. Joe is our new Building Commissioner, joining us with a lot of experience. He served as the Building Commissioner in Milton for 17 years. Before that, he was a local building inspector in Quincy for 18 years. And we were just talking about Hull because he served there for one year, but also loves New Tasket Beach. He also was a builder and remodeler on his own in the private sector. He attended Northeastern in Wentworth, and he's an avid walker and a traveler. I will just say, I have the honor of overseeing the Building Department and learned a lot from the whole team there. And I've already been so impressed with how much expertise and skill Joe is bringing, both to our systems in town, but also building code, which is a very complicated and important public safety regulation that we enforce at the local level. So welcome to Joe.
Welcome, Joe. I'm going to ask you first if there's any remarks that you'd like to make.
Not really. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm grateful for the opportunity. I understand and I learned very quickly that I have some big shoes to fill. But I think I can accomplish that, and I look forward to keeping the ship sailing, so to speak.
So absolutely, because we are in the if it ain't broke, don't fix it kind of stage. But things do continue to move forward, and we've got lots of challenges coming up in the future as we look at the new, the latest version of the building code that's just come in and looking at opt-in codes after that and whatever else is coming our way next. So plenty of building activity going on as well. We're glad to have you here. Any other remarks?
Yes. I'm sorry. Yeah, welcome to Needham.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks for coming here. You got your construction management at Northeastern University.
We did.
And Masonry at Wentworth?
Yes.
That's right. Okay. Good luck, and please make the department well, and I'm sure you'll do a great job.
Yeah, I think we have a talented staff as well, and that's always, that's always what makes a department like that work.
You have a relax? No? All good? We are good. We're so glad to have you here. I'm glad to hear you're another Walker because there's quite a few of them here, so that will fit right in.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
And I know people in town will all be hankering to see you soon because we find everybody ends up at the Building Department sometime. The next item on our agenda is Amy Haelson. So if Amy could come forward. Amy is a familiar face to this board, and we are glad to have her here, but she is in a new role. So this is the new Amy in the new role.
This is the new Amy. So Madam Chair, I'm just really so grateful to present Amy Haelson to you as our Director of Communications and Community Engagement, also a new title for that role. As you know, Amy served as our Economic Development Manager for three years, almost exactly three years. And before that, she had been at Dedham Square Circle, which is a private nonprofit version of the economic development that had spurred such great, great work in downtown Dedham. And before that, many years in public relations, marketing, and communications for the Make Wish Foundation. So she's got great, great skills. She lives in Dedham. She played soccer, coached soccer, proud UConn graduate, Dedham Town Meeting member, and mother of two daughters. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, so thank you for this opportunity. I am beyond delighted to have this new role for the town of Needham, a community that is, I came here wondering if I could find another community that I would have loved as much as my own that I've become involved with, and that has in fact happened. The more people I meet, the more community members that I interact with, I am so impressed by this community and just blown away by the civic engagement and just how much people care. So I am very excited to be in this new position and to continue the great work that was done by my predecessors, Cindy Wrigg and Alice.
And we're delighted to have you here, especially still here. If the opportunity was, you know, you wanted to do something different. I'm a huge fan of people following their passion to do what is important to them. And so I'm grateful that we're able to have an opportunity that you wanted to grow into and continue to keep your talents in the town. So can't wait for all the new things, Amy.
I was just gonna say, Amy, thank you for everything and working with you over the past few years has been great and so happy to know that you are staying with us and, you know, continuing to grow and do something that, you know, you hopefully love and being a part of our community like you've been with Dedham has been a pleasure for us. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Amy. It's been such a pleasure to work with you on the Council of Economic Advisers every month, and I look forward to seeing even more of you now and supporting you in this new role.
Thank you. Congratulations. You know, they say that federal government is an insurance company with an army, but in, in local government, it's all about outreach, public communication, engagement. So you are doing the most important job. You're the one who makes relationships work. So thank you very much.
I just also want to thank you, and I'm so grateful about your enthusiasm for this role. You know, you were just itching to do it, and you've already done such wonderful jobs. Well, I appreciate that, and I just wanted to add that I've already begun meeting with department managers and taking tours of facilities. And I spent a couple of hours last week at the RTS, and I have to say, I am just in amazement at what a well-greased machine that facility is. And I learned so much, and I'm so excited to share all of this information that I'm learning a lot of it for the first time out with the community to enlighten people on how local government works and help make things easier for folks to understand.
I can confirm how excited you are about the RTS.
Well, the RTS is an exciting place. We're gonna hear more about it tonight. So all good. I would have expected nothing less because that was what you did when you walked in the door as the economic director, was you immediately started meeting with our businesses. And so here you go with a whole new set of things to learn about and be able to tell people about. I'm grateful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you get to stay here.
You get to stay here because our next discussion, in fact, is the local transportation study. So if we can invite everybody else up to talk about what we've learned. Tyler, you're joining us up here too, right? Yeah. What we've learned about local transportation. Pull it close to you while you're speaking. Yeah.
So our folks, our friends from VIA are back with us. We first introduced them back in May as we launched the local transportation study. And I've been partnering with Tyler Gabrelski on this important initiative. And so we are excited to hear about all of the findings that VIA uncovered as they were exploring local transportation options here in Needham.
Yeah, so the different parts of the study included evaluation of the current transportation network as well as some different options for transit alternatives, micro mobility alternatives. And they came up with some, some different options with different metrics that can be used in a future decision-making process to determine that that's a direction that Needham wants to go in.
Terrific. And if the two of you would start by sort of introducing yourselves again, that would be great.
So thank you for having us back again today. My name is Kahalo Gorman. I'm the Director at VIA. Our team at VIA, VIA Strategies, we focus on transportation planning studies with a particular emphasis on new and innovative modes. So that kind of especially when it comes to on-demand transportation, that's an area where we're kind of considered experts. And given the promise that mode holds here, that was one of the reasons why we were selected to do this study. So I'll hand over to Goll, and she can introduce herself and run through the presentation.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us back. My name is Goll Kramer. I'm a transit planner in the VIA Strategies team. I've been there for a few years now, and I led a lot of the studies, so I'm excited to share that overview today, findings. Here to the next slide. Yeah. And so today, we're just gonna do an overview, a reminder of the project, so I know it's been a little bit of time, go over the existing transportation options that we reviewed for this part of the study, some highlights of the public engagement, and then a review of the different transportation alternatives that we came up with and the analysis that we did on each of these alternatives. And then as well as discuss a decision-making framework or a way that you could consider evaluating these options. So just a reminder, the goal for the study was to evaluate the existing local transportation options in Needham, identify gaps in service, and make recommendations for new services or changes to existing service. And so the way we did this, there were four different tasks. The first one was an assessment of the current transportation options, which I'll highlight in a second. The second task was evaluating the utilization of these options. So how well are these existing options meeting the needs of residents and workers in Needham? And so we did that through community and stakeholder engagement. And then the third task was taking our learnings from those first two tasks, developing the alternatives, evaluating those, and then putting that all together into a final report with some recommendations. So now the study has been completed, and it's up to kind of the town now to decide if they'd like to move forward with any of these alternatives, which ones, and securing the funding for implementing any of the alternatives. So with that being said, I'm gonna go through these slides a little bit quickly, just because this is all in the report, but I just wanted to give you a taste of what types of things we looked at for the existing transportation services. So we looked at the MBTA services, including the commuter rail, Route 59 bus, which does pass through Needham, the ride service for pair transit, as well as the Green Line, which I know does not come into Needham but is used by many Needham residents. And so we looked at ridership over the last few years, which the chart on the left is, as well as stop-level ridership, which is shown on the right. So you can see, you know, the most frequently used stops on Route 59 are at Newton Highlands and as well as at the Union Junction. So a lot of people connecting to the Green Line as well as the commuter rail.
Oh. Yeah. Could I just ask a question? My recollection is that that chart starts in 2019, which is, so I just, I'm thinking that is pre-pandemic, so we're seeing that there's been an increase in use of that bus over the period?
So, so that chart is actually starting in July 2021. So you're seeing growth kind of making up for the loss from the pandemic, but it's not actually showing the dip from the pandemic.
So do we know where ridership was before the pandemic started relative to this chart, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, I, I know that it hasn't fully recovered, and I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, and I don't remember if it's, maybe Kahala can look it up in the report.
Is it somewhere in the report? Okay.
If it's not in the report, we have those numbers. We had 2019 data for the commuter rail. I just don't think it's on that, this chart for the Green Line. And so we also looked at the Needham taxi service and the Needham lift program. So this is just showing a heat map of some of those key destinations that are being used by, on the lift programs. It's kind of hard to see, but most of the people are traveling within Needham. These were trips that are on average were about 10 minutes long, less than three miles in length. Some of the key destinations were the hospital, grocery stores, the center at the height. So as you would expect, kind of key destinations for older adults, though there is some travel kind of outside of Needham as well. And so showing the demand of where people are trying to get to. We also looked at some of the private transportation options. Oh, can we go? And so this included the 128 Business Council Shuttle, which I know a lot of the companies have to contribute financially to. So this one is showing, seeing January 2020 ridership, and you see it drop like every other transit service in the world to zero in March 2020, and then it's slowly making ridership up, but it's not close to even half of what it was pre-pandemic. And I think some of this ridership might never come back because of, these were commuter services, and a lot of people are at least working from home a few days a week. So it's unclear what the, whether the ridership will ever return to what it was before the pandemic.
And just jumping back to your previous question, I did find the MBTA bus ridership for Route 59 going back prior to the pandemic, and kind of the same thing, it hasn't recovered to even half of its pre-pandemic levels.
Thank you.
And so we did the review of the existing services, and then we did the community and stakeholder engagement to really learn about the needs of the residents and whether or not these services were meeting the needs, whether these services reading the needs of the residents, so that of the transit-dependent residents or those that are more likely to use transit. So the stakeholders that we talked to were the hospital, representatives of college students, high school students, older adults, people with disabilities, as well as commuters. So the people that we generally see riding transit. And then we also did the, go down to the next slide, please. And a survey that really got to the rest of the community. We received over 400 responses, which, yeah. The survey?
Yeah, you said this.
Oh, sorry. We.
Oh, I think a better way to start, we published this on various social media channels and things like that, and we received 470.
Yeah, it was the town newsletter, right? Town newsletter as well as social media and the website. Yeah. And it was only out for a couple of weeks, so I know that there's other surveys as well in the town. I think for a size, a community the size, 400 responses is actually pretty good for a survey like this, and more than what we've seen some other communities. And so I just wanted to go over some of the highlights from the survey and some of the learnings that we took away. So as you might already know, driving is the most common form of transportation for the respondents and as well for many Needham residents. Only 16% of respondents use public transit at least twice per week. And the two most common reasons people are using public transit is for, because it's difficult for them to find parking or it's more affordable compared to driving or taking a taxi, Uber. Respondents are more likely to use public transit if it's convenient, frequent, and direct. And we would consider most Needham residents what we call choice riders. So there's one, a way you can differentiate between two different types of transit users. One is choice riders and one are transit-dependent riders. So transit-dependent is someone that, you know, probably doesn't have a car, maybe doesn't live in a walkable neighborhood, and if there's a bus and it takes two hours, that's their only option, and they're gonna ride that bus for two hours to get to where they need to go. Choice riders, on the other hand, typically have another alternative. So maybe they can afford an Uber if their car is in the shop, or they have a car and they just use it because it's easy, and they don't mind like sitting in traffic a little bit. But if the public transit was easier for them to use, if it was convenient, maybe they're considering their carbon footprint, they might choose to use public transit if that service is comparable to their alternative modes. And so building off of that, we learned that 65% of respondents would use public transit for recreational purposes or social activities. So these are people that are likely to use transit maybe for an after-school activity or on the weekends if they want to go into Boston for concert, but they're not necessarily commuters. So only 36% said they would use public transit for their daily commuting. And then we also asked if people would be interested in using micro-transit service. That's one of the alternatives that we looked into, and we found that 51% of respondents would at least use it occasionally, which is kind of in line with what we would expect given that a lot of these, a lot of the survey respondents have cars and prefer to drive, but they're are open to using it more than the current transit use rate of 60%. And so based off of all of that finding, all the mapping and the different analyses we did, we developed five different transit alternatives. The first three are fixed route alternatives. The fourth one is a micro-transit, and then the fifth one is a hybrid alternative. For each of these, we developed different levels of demand estimates. So ridership estimate's a low, medium, and high. Today, I'm just gonna focus on the medium estimate to kind of simplify things, so all the alternatives are in the report. And then once we have these different alternatives, we did modeling of each of them to come up with different outputs, such as how efficient these services would be, how much they would cost, and how, how many vehicles you would need to operate them. So I'm gonna go through the alternatives and then the results from that analysis. So the first alternative was the Needham Center Bus Route. So this is a bus route that would go from the Green Line all the way to Defazio Park through kind of the core of Needham, through Needham Heights and Needham Center and the hospital. This would kind of have some overlap with Route 59, but would really be serving those mostly frequented key destinations that we found people are trying to get to. The second alternative is what we're calling the Needham East Route. So this is really trying to complement Route 59 and offer a different service that still connects to the Green Line and to the commuter rail, but really tried to focus on those affordable housing and senior housing locations. So this one really prioritized where people were living, and people can still kind of connect to Route 59 if they would like to. And then the third fixed route alternative that we looked at, what we're calling the East-West Needham Bus Route, which goes from Olent College all the way to Dedham Medical Associates, just past the Needham border, and still hits a lot of those key destinations in the core of Needham, but does not go all the way to the Green Line, does connect to commuter rail, but people could transfer to Route 59 to get to the Green Line. So when we're designing these routes, we're really trying to balance hitting enough key destinations, but also not making it so long that it's not useful to people because they'd have to spend now an hour and a half making sure they get to everywhere. So each route isn't necessarily gonna serve everyone's needs, but we're trying to balance that and how we develop the different alternatives. The fourth alternative is the micro-transit alternative. So just as a reminder, micro-transit is a transit service that there doesn't have any fixed routes. Vehicles roam around the zone, which in this case is the town of Needham, and it would be two to four vehicles roaming around the zone. People request rides when they want to ride. They wait typically between 15 and 30 minutes, depending on the time of day. The trips are shared, so you're likely traveling with someone going in the same direction as you. You might be asked to walk a few minutes to nearby intersection to kind of make the whole service more efficient. And in this case, we would also allow people to travel to the Green Line outside and to Dedham Medical Associates, but the rest of the trips would have to be within Needham. So you couldn't travel to like other parts of Newton or within one part of Newton to another part of Newton. You'd have to at least start or end your trip in the micro-transit zone, which is the town. Do you have any questions about micro-transit? I know we covered that last time, but I just want to make sure that that's clear before moving on. Okay. And then the last alternative is what we're calling the hybrid alternative, which works under the assumption that a lot of people are trying to get to the Green Line. So you would still have a micro-transit service that would be within Needham only. And then if people were trying to get to the Green Line, they could take either walk if they're nearby, take the shuttle to the Green Line, or they could take a micro-transit vehicle to the shuttle, and the shuttle would run every 30 minutes. You could have it alternating times with Route 59, so basically having service every 15 minutes from that trunk in Needham to at least one Green Line station. Okay, so these are the results of the alternatives, and the next few slides kind of summarize this, so I know it's a lot of numbers. So I'll go through this quickly, and then we can come back to it if needed. The first two rows are showing the estimated ridership for each of the alternatives, so the weekday ridership and then the annual ridership, assuming some weekend service as well. The vehicles required are at peak for the fixed routes. These are the numbers that you would need to operate the route at least every 30 minutes. For the micro-transit service that is operating at peak hour, so in certain micro-transit services, if you're operating off-peak hours, you might not need as many vehicles as peak hours, and this is for the medium estimate. So for the fixed route, you'd basically be able to keep this number of vehicles as demand increases, because you can just, you know, fit more people on a bus. In the micro-transit scenarios, as the demand increases, you need additional vehicles. And then the annual vehicle hours are kind of an output of the number of vehicles required, but it's annualizing it for the entire year, so that feeds into the cost estimates. Average productivity, which we measure as boardings or passengers per vehicle hour, is a measure of how efficient each of these alternatives are. So you can see the fixed route is around five passengers per vehicle hour in the first alternative. Just as a point of comparison, Route 59 currently has, or I think in 2022, had a productivity of seven passengers per vehicle hour, and then pre-pandemic had closer to 11. So these are kind of low for a fixed route alternative, but high for, or higher average But high for um, or higher average for a micro transit alternative in New and I believe their current productivity is around 3.5.
That's for Numa?
Yeah. Um, and then the next row is the annual operating cost. So this is based off of again, the vehicle hours. Um, and the estimated hourly cost for each of these services. So the fixed route. Um, has a slightly higher operating cost per hour than the micro transit service. It's because we assume larger vehicles and. Drivers with commercial driver's license, which are pretty typical for um, fixed routes. And then micro transit, we're assuming contract drivers and vehicles closer to like a mini van size. Um, and then the average cost per passenger is just another measure of how efficient the service is, how much bang for your buck you're getting. Um, and it's just based off of that total annual operating cost and the annual ridership estimates. So to summarize, um, the first alternative had the lowest annual operating costs because it used the fewest vehicles. But it also had kind of the middle level of uh, lower, the middle level ridership estimates, so third highest, third lowest, third side. Um, had the second lowest cost per trip because of that total um, operating cost being lower. Um, and it was the most productive again because of the lowest um, vehicle hours. Alternatives two and three kind of performed pretty similarly. So we bunched these together. These ones um, had higher annual operating costs than alternatives one and four, and the highest um, average cost per passenger. They also had. The lowest ridership, which is contributing to that higher cost per passenger. Alternative four, which was the micro transit alternative, um, had a lower cost, lowest cost per trip. So the most kind of like cost effective alternative. Um, had the second highest ridership, um, and it was the second most productive route uh, route option, um, after the first alternative. Um, which is that Needham Center Bus Route. And then the hybrid alternative had the highest ridership estimate. This is because we would expect some people to just. Take that shuttle in addition to the micro transit service. Um, though it had a higher cost per trip and is also the most expensive um, option of all of them, because you would need the additional vehicles um, to run both the shuttle and the micro transit service. Um, so. Building on all of that, um, we decided to come up with um, a framework for a way to evaluate these different alternatives. Um, and we're not saying that this is the only way to evaluate or that each of these metrics should be valued equally. But these are just some of the ways that the town can consider um, each of the different alternatives. So. Um, one of them is cost per trip. So like I mentioned, how um, much value you're getting for each dollar spent. Um, the second is the total annual cost for operating each of these services and that really. Will dictate um, how much money you need to operate the service. And if you have a certain budget already, then that might kind of help you decide which of these alternatives that the town can afford. Um, the total ridership is a way for us to measure how useful the service is and how many people are benefiting from the service. So higher ridership, you're getting more use out of, out of that service. Um, and then there's also like a qualitative trade off between the different types of transit modes. So some people. Prefer fixed routes because they offer regular predictable service. People are, know how to use a regular bus. They're familiar with that type of service that doesn't require booking. There's usually like a signpost and you know where to stand. Um, and some people prefer the flexibility that micro transit offers. They don't mind booking in advance. Sometimes micro transit can offer. Torga rate times and because it's a zonal based service, it really does cover more travel destinations than a fixed route does. So the last slide, um, really just takes the quantitative metrics um, that I just discussed and applies them. To the different alternatives. Um, so you can see the best performing of the four metrics. And I added productivity in there, which is just another measure of how effi- efficient the service is. Um, with cost per trip. Um, the best performing in terms of productivity are the first and fourth alternatives. Um, the most effective in terms of cost per trip is the fourth alternative. And the overall cheapest alternative, the one with the lowest cost is the first alternative. And then ridership is highest on the fourth and the fifth alternative. Um, ridership is really dictated by how many people and jobs are within either the zone or within a certain distance of the fixed routes. And so. A zone or a route that covers more areas is going to have a higher expected ridership. Um, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any. A lot of this is also very detailed and in a long reports. If you haven't had a chance to look at that, I might encourage you to do so when you have some time.
Great, thank you. Who wants to start? Kathy?
Love to understand more about how to calculate.
Yes. So um, it's based off of, so for each alternative, um, so for the fixed routes, I can talk about that first. Uh, we base it off of what we call a captry, um, which is the expected ridership we would um, see in a similar area. So we look at uh, comparable services and we see what percent of. People and jobs living within a certain area of that route, which I think in this case we did half a mile, um, and. Create a captry based off comparable services and apply that to the number of jobs and population within a half mile from the route. Use the same process for the micro transit service, but the captry is based off of similar micro transit services. So it's a separate captry for fixed route. And for micro transit, but it's based on comparable services. So for um. We use a lot of via services to, in similar geographies, on types of populations to get the micro transit and we use different. Local bus routes in Massachusetts, including MBTA, but also some non MBTA services to do the capture rates for the fixed routes.
So just so I understand, so this, your information is independent of anything people said in the survey? And independent of what you're seeing the other like the taxi and then the, the, the community council. It's not based on that. It's based on purely. Demographics within half a mile.
Yes.
Yeah, correct. So the, the, the main factor and the main reason why the, the micro transit has higher ridership is just because more people are within walking distance. Essentially, everyone is considered within walking distance. We do um, tailor those capture rates to the, the demographics of Needham versus maybe a community that would be lower income and would be more likely to be transit dependent. Um, so there, it's not like we use the same capture rate all across the United States, but it's essentially population, jobs and then demographics. And so, um, yeah.
Yeah, and the reason we wouldn't use like the Lyft service, um, if that service is limited to a certain number of people, so that's not necessarily indicative. And we don't know if those services are going to be replaced or not. So you could consider maybe slightly, if you're going to replace like a fixed route bus, like if you. Remove to the 59, you would assume, and you added another service, you would assume some of that ridership would get absorbed. Um, and the survey, again, like. We're not, the survey gives us a sense of what people that are actively, you know, responding about in surveys, what their transit needs are, but doesn't necessarily tell us who's responding. And if that response is like representative of the entire population.
So did you use the survey more as a way to identify some gaps and?
Yeah, so we use the survey, yeah, exactly. So to try to figure out what types of services, so like choice riders tend to oftentimes like. Times like micro transit services, which is why we definitely looked at that. Um, and we also asked about, I believe we asked about key destinations and. Types of services that people would be interested in. We asked questions related to micro transit. Um.
The, the survey, I think, was really helpful at confirming a lot of assumptions that we already had, which was mostly that your community is. Relatively affluent and has a large number of choice riders. And they were giving responses that reflected that. They were using. They would say, I would use public transit if it's convenient. And the reason I don't use it is because I can't find parking and things like that. Those are the types of. Responses you hear from someone who has a car and can afford to use it. That's not what we see in many other communities. We'll see very different responses in other areas.
Thank you.
Thank you for this presentation. That's really interesting and comprehensive. Um, I wonder if you can just confirm that these costs do not include the cost of the vehicles?
Uh, correct. These are operating costs. So um, yeah, it does not include capital costs. So there's a lot of federal funding out there for. Capital expenditures and oftentimes it's easier to get capital funds than operating funds, um, especially for larger buses. Um, but yeah, you would need that upfront as well. If you went with um. Again, to details that are in the report, but depending on the operating model you choose, if you decide to go with the turnkey service. Um, you could include, you know, the procurement of vehicles and not contract and not have the town own the vehicles or whoever the operator is.
And um, I was just gonna ask you about the outside funding sources, but are there, so obviously, as you said, there are capital funding sources. Are there sources for operating?
Yeah, so because um, Needham is in um, the MBTA zone, Route 59. Um, I, the town is not necess- eligible for a lot of the federal funding that most transit operators tap into. Um, so there are kind of more grant type programs or specialty type programs that you could apply for um, to, to fund the service. And then. There's also a lot of different kind of partnership models or, you know, just local funding, um, taxes and allowances and things like that.
Essentially that the MBTA is, is already claiming the fund, the federal formula funds for this community because they operate in this community. I will say that um, they do, the MBTA do, do some grants and things themselves. And we actually just recently heard that their supplemental grant will now also, micro transit will be eligible. That's kind of something we just heard in the last few days. So I know, I believe some of the other communities like Numa will be applying for that. So the MBTA may be able to pass on some of those funds to, through grants as well.
Yeah, and there's like state DOT grants as well.
Great. And just one last question on funding. Um, I assume that. You anticipate running the micro transit through and half where people can book their rides or something like that?
So if you proceed with a micro transit alternative, it's inherently app based. You, you could do a service where people call in. Um, it just, you would then need a, a call center and have that infrastructure, which I think would be more.
Just to, to be clear, uh, that we don't, I don't know of a single service in the USA that does not also offer phone booking though. So the app is the primary mode and. We usually see 80 to 90% of bookings through an app, but uh, in fact, I believe if you're using like federal and state funding, you would really struggle to. To not offer some kind of accessible booking method as well like a phone.
Right, but the, just to, to be clear, and the app, the creation of such an app would also be considered a capital cost and therefore not included in the operating project.
It, it, it actually, it would depend on the, so typically, typically a, a city would not create their own app. They would just license an app from a vendor and those apps. Um, are typically a, a software as a service type agreement. Um, sometimes they're able to be capitalized and sometimes they're not. And it would depend on specifically how that contract with that vendor is structured. But in many cases, they can be and that would, uh, when it's a capital cost, it's, you're usually able to get 80% of the funding through um, federal sources and you only have to provide 20%. Whereas for operating, it's more like 50 50.
Great, thank you. Kathy?
Thank you. Thank you. Great presentation. It seems at first was micro transit's way to go. Um, but um, quickly, what's the difference between Lyft and Uber? I mean, aren't they the same? Aren't they, isn't it just competing?
Yeah, so the main difference is that micro transit would be subsidized and you provide, um, the, the town would cover some of the costs to make that service affordable. Um, how, how much you would charge is still up for debate. Um, the other main difference is that. If the town is either the direct operator or the um. The uh, contract manager for that service, you would get more control over the service. You could. You know, make sure that the service has certain levels of oversight. You can control drug testing, you can control the quality of service. Um, and a lot of that can be stipulated in the contracts, but there's just a more of a level of control over the service and the cost as well upfront.
Okay.
And, and of course, the trips are shared with micro transit, whereas Uber and Lyft, um, they sometimes offer a, a pool type option, but it's rarely, rarely are trips actually shared in practice.
Okay. And a driver is the gig job and is it, or is it just sort of specifying the X number of vehicles, like two or three months, right?
So it can be. Um, and again, this goes into like the operating model that the town chooses. You can go with, um, if you go with the turnkey model, you could stipulate that you want um. Fully um, like full employed drivers with W2 and benefits and everything that, or you could go with the contract model, um, which is what a lot of towns do. And those would be, um, like day workers. That um, depending on the contract, would be paid on an hourly basis, which would allow the town to, you know, you could have less vehicles on during certain hours and kind of control the, um. The number of vehicles on the road.
And many state and uh, federal funding sources will require things like drug and alcohol testing and background checks for drivers. So. If you are um, planning on using many of those grants, you like Uber and Lyft typically cannot um, meet some of those requirements. So that if you were to go with one of their models, you might be limited in terms of your funding sources.
Okay. And in other towns, what department manages this?
I mean, it, many in larger cities, it's typically the transit agency. Uh, so like it would be the, the MBTA in some situations. In smaller towns, if, if they, if they're big enough to have a Department of Transportation or something, or like a, a transportation team, that would typically be who would oversee this type of service.
Embarrassed that. It's like.
Well, I mean, a turnkey, i- i- if, if a community is sort of not, I guess, big enough to have, to feel like they have the skills and expertise in-house, that's kind of where the turnkey. Contract comes into play because you can essentially contract out everything. So as long as you kind of in your procurement. Uh, dictate all the quality of service standards and things like that, you can actually have a vendor essentially be responsible for all of that.
So thank you. A couple of my questions have gotten answered um, along the way. I'm curious if you thought about how interconnections might work to Numa or to catch connect in Wellesley. Is that something you considered? I mean, it seemed like on the fixed route, you could make a connection uh, to Newton.
Yeah, so that would really be up to like the towns coming up to some agreements. So you could have a multi-town service and you could share kind of overhead costs of the service and. Charge, you could divide the cost up in different ways. Um, I think for a lot of riders, that would be especially useful to them because. People don't always think in like town boundaries and they want to travel beyond the boundaries of their town. Um, and so you could have like a larger zone that is um, co-owned by multiple towns. Um, and uh, again, if you went with a turnkey vendor, you could all kind of contribute to that, but have one operator and have one app. Everyone's kind of dialing into the same service.
Okay. And if we were thinking about going forward, what would be the specific next steps that we would need to consider?
Um, I think the, the first thing to, to do would be uh, decide which alternative you want to go through and then figure out what kind of operating model you want to do. And if you want to go with the turnkey operating model, it would be, once, obviously securing funding would be the next kind of big step, but then figuring out. The, an RFP to kind of get that operator. Um.
Yeah, I think funding is definitely where I would, I would, uh, I would basically make a decision as to, do, are you, do you feel like the fixed route model kind of going for the very sort of. I, I kind of see that as kind of the minimum that you could go with, with, as you saw, the, the cheapest option was a fixed route. Or a micro transit. And then it really is about using this report to um, go out and apply for grants and apply for funding and try and um. Basically try and work out what is, what is feasible, what's realistic.
And if um, if we were to go forward with micro transit and you've suggested that grants may be available for about 50% of the cost. How much money does that mean that the town would need to steward, to gather, to be prepared to put into this?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say somewhere around kind of the half a million dollars to a million dollar mark is probably annually correct. Yes, yes.
All right. I just wanted to know what ballpark we're in.
Um, I'm curious if you, um, I, I know it seems that you based a lot of the ridership information on um, commuters. And I'm wondering if you also consider services like Newton's local motion, but it's a. It's like a rideshare kids. Basically, um, they have all these after school activities and this is the service that takes them from place to place. And I'm wondering if you. Considered that in this estimate of ridership and. What, what confidence you might have that like kids would be a ridership um, consumer for this service, you know, given that. They need to get everywhere. They're probably the cause of a great deal of the traffic on our local streets, but people might be um. Loathe to send their kids, you know, alone in a Lyft or an Uber or something like that. Um. And, and whether that played into this?
Yeah, so, so our ridership estimates are, are based off of the total population. So they do include kind of all ages. Um, and we do see a lot of high school students, like I think the service in. It was Westboro actually went kind of like viral with high school students a couple of years ago and they were all just kind of. They basically just took, or most of the rides on that service. Once you care about it, it's a couple of dollars and it's really easy to get around. I think parents especially. Are open to it because they can kind of track the vehicle and there's a little bit more accountability um, because of that service. Um, we could, I could do some more research into whether or not we have any other examples of uh, students using services, but I know at least for high school age students, it becomes quite popular in a lot of these towns.
And I think this comes back to again, if, this is kind of why many towns will go with, rather than going with an Uber Lyft model, they'll go with a. Like a, either a turnkey or an in-house model, because you can, you can um, I think, give a lot of reassurance to parents when you say our drivers are drug and alcohol, randomly drug and alcohol tested. There are background checks done on our drivers, those kind of things, I think. And just the fact that when you open the app, it will potentially have the town of Needham like seal on it and things like that, I think tend to. Create trust in the system and then it, um, actually a lot of times the drivers, people will be, become familiar with the drivers because if you're thinking it's only three or four. Vehicles, that might just be a pool of 10 to 12 drivers. And so after a couple of trips, you are likely to run into the same driver over and over again.
And the vehicles are also branded. So you, you know, going around, you say, oh, that's, you know, I need a micro. And the vehicles are also branded, so you, you know, going around, you say, oh, that's, you know, I need a microtransit vehicle and you can kind of see them, so they're a little bit more visible and so more public than Uber and Lyft.
Yeah, I feel like I could envision that being very helpful to parents who are using public transportation to get to work and can't get home or, or just work and can't get home to do that after school. All that after school thing that people do in and out of the driveways and whatever. And so I can see that if it was something that was appealing both to parents and to kids, like it's not going to work if it's not cool enough. I could see that making a real impact. Did you want to say something?
Just a question about how much the riders.
They would take care of a share of the revenue needed.
Yeah, so it depends on what you choose to, to charge for the fares. We typically see kind of within, you know, the two to three, two to four dollar mark. I think, I don't have exact numbers, I think it tends to be between like ten and thirty percent fare box revenue, depending on how much you charge and how much ridership. There's typically discounts for seniors, sometimes also for, for youth. So that also will impact it depending on if you do those discounts and what that level of ridership is for those demographic.
I know Newton, for example, recently raised their fares, so that was one decision they made. And that, that can have a pretty significant impact on ridership, as we can imagine. A five dollar fare is a lot bigger deal to certain people than two dollars and can really cut the ridership significantly. So for our ridership estimates, we've assumed that fare around two or three dollars.
Is there a way to establish categories so that?
Yes.
You could extend a discount to those who needed it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Newton, Newton does that, for example. They, their seniors have different service hours, they have different fares, they're allowed to travel to different places. So they, they essentially have like a senior service that is run with the same vehicles and drivers, but the seniors get entirely different travel rules and fares than anyone else. And that's done through kind of like a verification process where they either get like some kind of a code that they can link to their profile or something like that so they can confirm.
Thank you. Any other questions, Yosa? Thank you, and thank you for all the work and for giving us some food for thought and we'll see where the next steps take us.
Yeah, we're excited to see what you all do and Dee and Tyler have our contact information, so we're happy to answer any other questions if you have any.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't realize we had so many things at six o'clock tonight, so we are still at six o'clock. And I see we are at a public hearing. Is the next item on agenda for EverSource for grant of location if Ms. Calendar is here?
I'm here.
Hello there. Thank you, Ms. Calendar, if you would please present Caravan Circle to us.
Yes, so EverSource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately thirteen hundred and ninety-one feet of conduit in seven manholes into Caravan Circle and also approximately three hundred and forty-one feet of conduit in two manholes into Standish Road and approximately a hundred and sixteen feet of conduit into Alden Road. And lastly, twenty-five feet of conduit into Stewart Road, and all this is necessary for our system upgrade.
Okay, and Ms. Fitzpatrick, is everything in order? Always a good thing to have in order. Are there any questions from the board?
This is an awful lot of work. Can you tell us what the duration of this project would be?
I was told it would take a few weeks with the, the horizontal directional drilling. That particular machine is very efficient, so I was given a few weeks.
And the comments say that this emergency, this was emergency repair work that was approved or a portion of this was emergency repair work. Do you know what that is about?
I am not aware of that. When I was given this petition, I was told that we just had to do some system upgrades in your, in that area.
Any other question?
Yeah, just a comment. This is a big project. It seems everything's in order. This is a big project. Are we sort of on the cusp of ever talking about putting stuff electrical underground and taking off the poles? I mean, that, that will probably be a goal for next year, the board, but this seems like one of those opportunities that we could with such a big project to stop putting stuff underground.
So typically, when things go underground right now, it's led by a developer and I don't fully understand how this particular project got put together. I don't know if Ms. Lustig or somebody else might have more insight about that particular question.
It's my understanding, Miles, you might notice that this is a direct, this neighborhood was a direct buried neighborhood like we've done earlier. And in order to improve the service and run the conduit, that's why this is such a large area and ran in a full circuit. Is that correct?
Yes.
You know what, Miles, do you want to come talk to a microphone so that somebody can hear you online as you're answering that? Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry. I know you're trying to do all the, all the things, but, and we've asked you a question.
And Madam Chair, my understanding, this is similar to a project that has been done previous this year or late last year where it's an extended, like, cer- circuit, as it were, and it's being drilled, as Ms. Calendar had mentioned, in a horizontal drilling. So there's less surface disruption relative to some other projects where they dig into the entire section. And that's about the extent of my knowledge on horizontal drilling.
Right, that was a project last year.
But that doesn't have new poles, right? If they're doing the horizontal drilling, that's, that's going underneath. Right? That's my understanding.
Yes.
And this is all about new poles, so it's a, it is an interesting question about, is there some threshold where we say, gosh, by the time you do all this, why are we not burying it?
It's manholes, but also.
Oh, utility holes, okay, yep.
For another project?
Item on your agenda, if you wanted to ask more questions before you vote, it is also a public hearing.
So I was, that's why I keep hoping to get to the public part of the questions. Why don't, is there anybody here from the public with a question related to this? Miss, come on up, sir. And give your name and your.
Jim Masterman, fifty-three Canavan. Mr. Board, Madam Chairman, Ms. Fitzpatrick, members of the board, how do you do? Jim Masterman, fifty-three Canavan Circle. I'm also a member, I'm a, a town meeting member from precinct C. This is the second phase of this kind of a project in this neighborhood. There was a companion project earlier this month that lasted about three weeks where there was cutting along. It's not all, it's Standish. There was cuts along Standish and there was equipment laid out for quite some time. There are piles of dirt along the sidewalks and things like that. I assume this is a similar project on Canavan, but there will be deep cuts in the road and that's fine. The question I have, though, is what happens afterwards? Will it be resurfaced? The roads take a pretty good beating throughout the neighborhood. We've, I don't know whether this was on a resurfacing plan or not. I know they're scheduled across the town. But after this is done, the roads are pretty beat up. And I just have a question regarding the final condition of Canavan as well as Standish, because the roads come together.
The, the utility will have to leave the road in the condition that it was when it started. I, I don't know where it stands on the list of replacement or resurfacing, but we can certainly find that out.
I think you should follow it up because it does not stay in the same condition at all, as we know. It appears as if they do a nice job at re-landscaping the sidewalk and the burn between the sidewalk and the street. It's put in a pretty good condition. Equipment, by the way, is laid out for that entire duration of the, of the project on the side streets and they, they sort of commandeer portions of the neighborhood streets to do it. That's fine. There's never been a problem with access or what have you, but once it's done, it's pretty beat up.
So, so I did see Ms. Calendar nodding in agreement that the road is to be left in the condition in which it was found.
That is correct.
So I don't know whether the town engineer might have more insight or something. It could be that they are waiting until they've done the entire project to redo it, but we should be able to get an answer to that question for you.
Okay, very good.
If we can.
Members of the board.
Madam Chair, as a reminder, any trench has to settle for a full season before its finals.
Before.
If it's just recent, then that would be another reason that it's not fully. But a trench is certainly a trench, no matter how good it's.
Okay. All right, so I think we've determined all of this is underground, it's the completion of a project. We would expect it to be, the road to be restored to something like similar at the conclusion. Are there other questions from this board? If there aren't, are we ready for a motion?
But do you want to hold off on voting until we get an answer about?
So, so I see the question about underground or not as being a separate issue because this is underground?
Okay.
Okay, I think that's a reasonable question that we should ask, but I think it's different from this.
Kate, the town engineer's here if you want to ask him. He's online.
Mr. Rider, are you moving over? Hi, Tom. I, I don't know.
Hi there.
Sorry to be putting you on the spot as you're joining us here, but we, we have a question. I'm not sure if you caught all of it. The question was, in the event that there's a significant amount of work, is there some point where we have a discussion with EverSource or with the utility about undergrounding utilities if they are working above ground? I think that was the question.
Are you talking about for Canavan Circle specifically?
We're not talking about Canavan because I understand Canavan, in fact, is underground, right? And that's where it's being dug. But I think the question was if somebody were doing an extensive amount of work above ground, is there just a point where we would have a discussion with the utility about undergrounding those utilities?
So not to jump in ahead of Tom, but I will. If, if we were to do that, the, some, the, somebody pays for it other than EverSource. So when a developer does it, the developer pays. When towns do it, they, they fund a design and then they submit a design to EverSource or Verizon, whatever the case may be. And then the ratepayers pay. So it's a, it's a very, that's what happened on Chestnut Street. People don't sometimes notice that there's no overground, above ground on Chestnut Street. The ratepayers paid that for some long period, like fifteen or twenty years. So there is a process for it, but it is a, it's a very long process and it frankly, a very expensive process. The last, the last time we looked at it for the Highland Ave, Medium Street project, it was more than a million dollars a mile. So, and that was a ways back. So the general question, I don't know that Tom was to answer, but he could probably confirm that this is all underground. That would be really helpful.
Yeah, and I would agree with you.
Canavan's all underground, is that correct?
Yes, this section of Canavan is underground, is replacing a direct burial in conduit. So there'll all be some new vaults installed in, in the right of way, so that's why they're looking for the grant.
Okay, thank you. So I would welcome a motion. Thank you for that.
All right, I'll make a motion that this like would approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately one thousand three hundred and ninety-one feet of conduit and seven new utility holes in Canavan Circle approximately.
Excuse me, them manholes, not poles.
I'm sorry.
Manholes?
Utility holes.
Yeah. Oh, okay, you're saying utility holes, okay.
Yeah, utility holes in Canavan Circle approximately three hundred and forty-one feet of conduit in two new utility holes. Approximately one hundred and sixteen feet of conduit in Alden Road and approximately twenty-five feet of conduit in Stewart Road.
Any further discussion or questions?
Yeah, just for Kate. Okay, can you repeat what you said about the seasons and why it probably, the first, I guess, the first part of this left the road, probably why it is and how it has to sit for a season? Because I don't think that everyone heard that.
Um, Madam Chair, if I may, to the town engineer, Tom, if you could speak to why a trench is inspected the following season over winter in order to correct for settlement and what happens in that process?
Yeah, so they usually, they usually install, after they install a utility, they backfill, compact as much as they can and pave, and they put a temporary pave. It's supposed to be smooth and level with the surface. But there's going to be some settling over the course of a few months. So we usually have them wait until the final paving the following year and then that's, that becomes their guarantee period for another year. Thank you.
And EverSource would do the.
Yes.
Right.
We meet with EverSource once a month and we go over the items that they need to follow up on as well.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you, Ms. Calendar.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, that brings us to our last item at six P M., which is a public hearing on the recycling and transfer station user fees and charges. So there's a recommendation that's come, Mr. Davidson is coming up along. I think Ms. Lustig is online to join us and Cecilia Simcheck and Matt Tamar. Welcome to all of you.
Thank you.
I don't know if we have anybody from the solid waste and recycling advisory committee who would.
We, we do, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, as we're waiting for Bill Connors to join us, the staff presented to the recycling transfer station solid waste advisory committee recommendations, which they took under consideration and the committee voted unanimously to recommend the rates that are before you. There are four rates that are change, are proposed to change. One is the scale rate, which hasn't changed since two thousand thirteen, the minimum.
Ten years ago.
Yeah.
A decade.
Yes, a, the minimum charge for going across the scale also from two thousand thirteen. Actually reversing an action that was taken less than a year ago is to not charge for the disposal of fluorescent lamps. We would still be accepting them, but there would not be a charge to dispose of them. And then lastly is a change to the cost of disposal of small printers because our cost for disposing is more than what is being charged. Madam Chair, the committee did hear these and make a recommendation. Just as a reminder for the board, the members are Jeff D. Heller, the chair, Jeff P. Heller, a member, David Estey, a member, Wells Blanchard, a member. And who's joining us this evening is Bill Connors, who is the vice chair. Jeff D. Heller, the chair, is away on vacation.
Thank you for joining us, Bill. Anything else or, or are you ready for questions?
I, in fairness to the chair, I would allow, I would like to have him have the opportunity to speak to the board.
Absolutely. Bill, let me turn it over to you if you'd like to say anything about the recommendation you're making.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the only, I think Dave Davidson did a great job of summarizing our deliberation. The only thing I would add is that we did look at the rates that were for this tipping fees at the scale. We did look at the rates of the neighboring towns and communities in our area to see where we stood on that. And historically, to see where we stood on that. And historically, we've always tried to have a fair rate that has been in line with our neighboring communities. And given the length of time that has taken place since, um, our last fee adjustment, we are now at the bottom of the of the line, uh, in terms of fees for our neighboring communities. So we're attracting a lot more, um, outside activity than, um, we would prefer to see. So, um, the board, uh, deliberated that and unanimously recommended that we raise the fee to be more in line with the the local communities around us and be more of a market rate.
And and I'm presuming that this is something that Matt actually brought to your, uh, committee as an operational issue that he was seeing at the RTS as this volume was increasing from outside haulers?
That is correct. So with the, Matt, uh, brought it to the attention of the committee that with the, uh, increased volume of outside vendors that were coming through the commercial, uh, side of the RTS, it was pulling resources away from the, um, the rest of the RTS and making it difficult to service the, the areas where community members and and town members were, um, using the services of RTS. So without, uh, these adjustments, the the next recommendation would would be that they would have to come back and ask for additional funding for additional staffing to be able to service both the commercial side of things and the residential part of the operation.
Okay, and these, uh, increased fees for haulers, I presume also it will impact, uh, haulers who are serving Needham families for trash pickup today will see as a result or are likely to see as a result, could see some increase in the cost of their service. It's all related as a system. And they're currently benefiting from the low fees that the town has been offering to, uh, haulers to tip in Needham.
Yes, so it is reasonable to assume that they will have to adjust their rates as well.
Great. Um. Let me, uh, ask if there's, I I will go first to members of the public and see if there are any members of the public here who would have questions. This is a public hearing. I don't know if there's anyone in the room or anyone online with a question regarding these changes. Not seeing anything. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, do we know where this increase puts us now on the list of, we were near the bottom before? Are we in the middle? Are we at the top?
When we surveyed other communities, we're now more near the middle. Um, there will be three other communities out of the total. A twelve community survey, um, three other ones will be lower than us and then we'll be at the same rate as two other communities and the rest are significantly higher. They go up to four hundred dollars.
How was the decision made to keep us so in the middle? Just given that it's like been a while?
Yeah.
Since since we were raised, do we not need to like a little higher to catch up?
I think, I think when we were discussing it, we didn't want to make a substantial jump so so quickly. And so we were kind of looking at what we thought might be a reasonable increase to see how that affected the volume of haulers that we were receiving. If you have anything to add, Matt?
I mean, the rate is designed to be affordable for the residents. That's, that's our goal. That's my goal is to make sure that contractors who are serving residents and residents who are using the scale themselves are paying a rate that's very fair and very much in line of what it costs the town for personnel, equipment, transportation, disposal. I think this is an alignment that's relatively fair. I think our thought process is that we had become something of a low point and that was drawing in maybe some of the extra volume. We can manage it, but it is changing our priorities. We are probably more sixty percent commercial volume and forty percent residential. And traditionally, I think we're more of a fifty fifty. Those are, uh, haulers who are serving the communities. We're mindful of that. We don't want to, you know, raise our rates beyond that. But if a load is coming from Waltham or Dover and it's in with a load that's been pulled from Needham, you know, that's, that's coming off of the transfer station staff managing that. So it's, it's, we want to stay on top of it, but I think this alignment is is correct.
Are you thinking there's a timeframe when you want to just come back and revisit this again? Should there be a regular interval for checking in?
I mean, I'm pretty mindful of the fact that these haulers are members of the community and they're small businesses. And we want to support them, give them time to react. I think they want to, um, be able to reach their customer base and let them know. Certainly, if you're getting your trash, um, pulled and brought to the transfer station, it's going to have an impact. So I think this is a good time for the public to hear this and I would like to hear from the the haulers on how it's going to impact them. And, um, yeah, I think this is a good conversation to have and and I really want to work with our local haulers. That's important to me.
Chair, if I just may add, um, although I indicate date that it was last changed, that's not the last time that the rates looked at. We indicate when we last change rates, but those rates are looked at regularly. And of course, when, um, uh, in two thousand twenty with COVID and stuff, there was basically a freeze across the board and looking at rates. So it's been some time. So I I do not want the board to think that they haven't been looked at since two thousand thirteen. They they have been. The other factor is when, uh, we compare ourselves to other communities, they get a sense of of where rates seem to be, but each community's rates, there may be different cost factors that are coming into, uh, to play there that they have different cost structures from us. So that's another thing that we're looking at is, uh, the fees, uh, commensable to the cost of the towns, uh, incurring. This is, uh, a notable on a percentage basis, uh, increase, but it is the first time we've changed the rate in a ten years. So we shouldn't, uh, uh, lose fact that, um, that it's both time to change it. It is representative or commensable to the cost structure that Needham needs to work with and, uh, that, uh, that we do look at them on a regular basis.
Yeah, I think everything was pretty much answered. I was going to ask that exact same question, just like over the next ten years, are we going to incrementally increase it here and there? But I think what you said is that you want to kind of wait, hear from people. But just keeping that in the back of our minds, like, do we wait ten years and then do this again? Or do we in three or four years do a little bit more so it's people can expect that it's coming? Um, that's all I was thinking.
Okay. All right. So tonight is a public hearing. Uh, there's no vote this evening, so we're interested and, uh, people are welcome to continue to provide feedback to us using selectboard@needhamma.gov. Uh, we're happy to hear from you. And it will come back at a future agenda.
August fifteenth.
On August fifth. Kevin?
Thank you. Cecilia, quick question. What are the bottom three? What are the numbers? What's the rate?
There's a hundred and forty dollars a ton, one sixty-five, and then one seventy.
Okay, that's good.
But the the one sixty-five for Wellesley doesn't include the fact that, um, on most of their commercial loads, they have a two hundred dollar handling fee. That's kind of automatic as a base level.
Okay.
So for one sixty-five, if you're bringing in like a mixed load from like a shed tear down with some other debris like tile or material, you're going to start at two hundred and then the rate's one sixty-five. So, um, different, as Dave explained, different, different stations have different or different towns, different transfer stations have different methods of of kind of calculating their costs. Um, I would say we're a big facility and we're very efficient. And so that's, I think, one of the reasons why our costs are down. Some of these other places might be smaller, but, um.
Yeah. Okay, and to Bill and to Matt, I think, I think Matt, you're spot on. You're like just striking the balance. So thank you.
Good.
This will take effect how long after the question?
Madam Chair, the recommendation would be that the board would take action on approving it. It's August fifteenth vote with an effective date of September first.
So people return from the summer. Okay. All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Um, that brings us to six twenty. A public hearing and application for a transfer of an all alcohol license for Vino de Vino LLC during business as Vino de Vino. If we could have, I think we have Mr. Miller and Mr. Mendez and I think Steve was online at one point. I see Steve there. I don't know if he wants to come over.
I I believe he's just watching as a resident and.
He can do that too.
Interested party. So.
Great. Thank you.
No problem. Uh, thank you for hearing us tonight. Uh, as you said, my name is Tom Miller from the Dermic Quilty in Dallas, Boston. I'm here with, uh, Mike Mendez, uh, on behalf of the applicant, um, MDM Lions, uh, for this transfer of the Vino de Vino license and pledge of that license, uh, related to the financing for for this transfer. The plan here is to, uh, continue to operate Vino de Vino in the manner in which, uh, the town has become accustomed to its operation. Uh, not changing the location, not changing the DBA. This is, uh, a proposed ownership team that is made up of current um, employees of Vino de Vino who are excited at the opportunity to take over and run, uh, run this this business uh, in a way that continues to provide this amenity to the town. They have variously been with the, uh, with the licensee since two thousand eight, um, in various different capacities. As I said, they're going to continue to operate at this current location in the manner in which the town is is accustomed to. Uh, they understand the challenges of this type of operating this type of license in this community, uh, including that the pitfalls that can come with it. They understand that that, um, there is a great responsibility with operating a package store license and are going to continue to implement the, um, changes that have been, uh, implemented, um, since March. Uh, they understand, you know, where the errors came from, how best to, uh, continue to prevent them from happening again.
And it's your name, you're you're referring to the issue with a an underage drinker coming to the facility and all the training and the planning that got put in place by the current ownership of Vino de Vino at that time to mitigate for that.
The the monthly, the monthly trainings, the the, um, calendar to, you know, to identify when somebody is of legal age, so errors do not occur again. Uh, ID scanners, um, are in the process of being implemented and rolled out. So they are, they're aware of where mistakes were made and are doing their best to prevent any mistakes under their guidance and and ownership. Uh, if the board decides that this is their appropriate candidate. As I said, um, we are also opposing the refunding of the license and inventory to Metal Six Bank, which secures the financing for this type of transaction. Mike here, he has been with the licensee for more than six years. Uh, he has been involved in the industry since two thousand twelve when he received his uh, degree in wine making and viniculture. Um, he has been running the day-to-day operations since March, uh, of of the licensee. Uh, so he understands what has been implemented and how to continue to, uh, run those operations. He is a citizen. He is obviously experienced in the industry, as I just said. He is tips trained. He is familiar with the laws of the Commonwealth, the ABCC, and this board for the sale and service of alcohol. The applicants here, uh, are excited about this opportunity to, um, continue to operate this pack store here, uh, in the manner in which they're accustomed. And, you know, ultimately, I will, uh, say that, you know, they're excited for this opportunity and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I appreciate your, um, specifically bringing up the incident in March and that the kind to maintaining, um, the changes for that. Are there any questions from the board related to this particular change? And this does, you would be responsible just for the Needham operation. This is part of a larger, uh, change for Vino de Vino, but you are just responsible for Needham, correct?
There are four stores total. Um, my primary responsibility will be in Needham, yes.
Correct. Right. Marcus?
Thank you so much. I just had a question about the ID scanners being in the process. Um, is there a timeline for when those might be up and running and being used?
We expect those to be installed and running by September first.
Okay.
Kevin?
Thank you. So I'm seeing three managers listed, Angela, Monica, and Michael, right?
Those are LLC managers, yes.
Awesome managers. Okay, so you're a hundred percent, each is a hundred percent responsible or?
Those are the LLC managers. They're responsible under the corporation.
Okay.
Mike is the proposed manager of record for this location.
All right, so you're the one in the hot seat.
Correct.
Okay.
When when we call in the case of a challenge, Mr. Mendez will answer.
Okay.
Other questions from the board? Um, I don't know that whether you've been in before and had the the opportunity to hear the lecture that we typically give everybody. I will spare you most of that today, but but safely, you know, understand, um, we do take this quite seriously and we do expect you to share in the seriousness of that and particularly in the protection of the youth of Needham in ensuring that this isn't something that is, um, freely available to them. We're hoping that as a town, we all work together to to protect that access so that it goes to the right places.
Absolutely. We share the same sentiment and, uh, the previous owner of the company, Raphael. You know, this was his, um, the beat of his truck. So we 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 plan to continue with our vigilance.
And meanwhile, I do know people appreciate the location that you have and your selection and, um, the other pieces, all the all the inventory that you offer. So.
I appreciate that.
Any further questions? This is a public hearing. I don't know if there's any members of the public tonight who wish to speak on this, either in the room or online. Marcus?
I'm just going back to the ID scanners because that's been such a troubling thing that we've had over the past year. And we've had a lot of hiccups with people that haven't used them. And I know, can't tell you to use them, but when I think about it, as far as your process, what that looks like, and then, you know, is there? How do you know who to scan and who not to? Do you are you looking at just by by sight or you're scanning everybody? Or like, what is, I guess, your thought process behind that?
Sure. So the scanners that we're installing are are, um, high speed. So our plan on September one is to scan every ID that's in the store. It makes it easier. It doesn't hurt feelings. And if you want to buy wine with us, that's how you'll do it.
I'm in favor. I'd love to see that happen at every store in Needham, so. Any other questions? If there are none, I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the section fifteen, all alcohol license transfer applications submitted by Vino de Vino LLC, DB, uh, during business Vino de Vino, including the appointment of Michael Mendez as manager of record. And if so, approved for the application to the ABCC for review and final approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's zero. Welcome. Congratulations and, um, we look forward to working with you and we hope we never see you under negative circumstances.
I agree. Thank you very much.
That is always the goal.
Yes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move the consent agenda and the appointment count.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. The next item is, uh, the alcohol revocate, license revocation hearing for Poet King Restaurant Group. Matt Saya is the licensed owner. Matt Saya is the licensed owner of that license. I do not believe Matt, Mr. Saya is here. So I hereby open this hearing, which is being held, one pursuant to General Ledger, chapter one thirty-eight, section seventy-seven, to consider the cancellation of a section twelve on premises pouring liquor license issued to Poet King Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Hungry Coyote, eleven eighty-five Highland Avenue, Needham, for failing to operate a restaurant with alcohol service. And two pursuant to General Law, chapter one thirty-eight, sections twenty-three and sixty-four, to consider the cancellation of said license for failing to appoint a licensed manager as required by General Law, chapter one thirty-eight. So if the licensee is present or if there are any representatives of Mr. Saya here and seeing none. To begin the hearing, I note the following documents are included as part of the record for the proceeding. Notice of a hearing dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three from the town manager to the licensee. Notice of a decision dated April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three from the town manager to the licensee. Minutes of the select board's April twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Minutes of the select board's February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. A notice of a decision dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two from the town manager to the licensee. And minutes in video of the select board's January eleventh, twenty twenty-two meeting. The facts before the select board are as follows. The licensee has not served alcohol under its license since January eighth, twenty twenty-two. The select board suspended the license on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two for thirty days, commencing when the Needham Board of Health reinstated the licensee's food establishment permit and indefinitely suspended the license until such time as the licensee submitted documentation supporting Leonel Leon's ability to hold the position of licensed manager or the licensee submitted an application for a change of manager. And the select board approved the designated licensed manager in either event. And B, the licensee submitted all required corporate filings to the Secretary of State's Corporate Corporations Division. Three, the licensee obtained its food health permit on twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-two and submitted its corporate documents on July one, twenty twenty-two. Four, upon the request of the licensee, the board held a hearing on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to consider whether Ms. Leon could serve as the licensed manager. Evidence submitted at the January eleventh, twenty twenty-two suspension hearing demonstrated that Ms. Leon had not worked at the establishment since March of twenty twenty. Similarly, during the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three hearing, the licensee confirmed that Ms. Leon was not a current employee of the establishment and was not working there. The select board requested additional information demonstrating Ms. Leon's ability to serve as a licensed manager and continued the matter to March fourteenth. Five, on the licensee's request, the matter was continued again to April twelfth. Six, on April twelfth, the attorney for licensee asserted that Ms. Leon does not want to serve as the licensed manager and the licensee has no intention for her to serve as licensed manager. Seven, the board chose to close the hearing and notified the licensee that it had three months to either appoint a new manager or its license would be canceled. Eight, the licensee has yet to appoint a new licensed manager or provide any evidence that Ms. Leon wishes to serve as licensed manager or is of sufficient quality to do so. Nine, the licensee has had since January twenty-two to appoint a new licensed manager and to reinstate its license, but has taken no actions in this regard. Ten, accordingly, since January eighth, twenty twenty-two, the licensee has not served alcohol under its license, nor has it appointed a licensed manager. At this point, I would ask if there were any licensee available, if they'd like to present any facts. Seeing that no licensee is here, there are no additional facts at this point beyond those that I think are relevant to this. So are there questions at this time from select board members? If there are not, then the, the recommendation would be that in fact, the select board revoke the license at this time because there has been so no, no service of alcohol and there has not been a licensed manager appointed. Are there any questions from the board with respect to that recommendation? All right. Then we would recommend that we move to one, cancel the on premises pouring liquor license issued to the Poet King Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Hungry Coyote, eleven eighty-five Highland Avenue, Needham, for failing to operate a restaurant with alcohol service as outlined in its section twelve liquor license pursuant to General Law, chapter one thirty-eight, section seventy-seven, and for failing to appoint a licensed manager pursuant to General Law, chapter one thirty-eight, sections twenty-three and sixty-four, effective ten AM on July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Two, order the licensee to return its liquor license to the select board's office by ten AM on said date. And three, authorize the town manager to send notice of the cancellation to the licensee and the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion?
Noticing now, one quick correction on the order. It would be revoked as of the twenty eighth. That should be revoked as of the twenty sixth, so tomorrow versus Thursday or Friday.
Wait, so it should be revoked as of ten AM on July twenty-sixth?
Correct. And for this board's reference, given that the license has been suspended this entire year, the town currently holds said license, so it is already in our possession.
Okay.
So moved and amended?
Second.
Okay. Any final discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That is revoked. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our next item, which is the DPW complex feasibility study update. And we have a number of people who are in the room this evening, if they could come join us. And I think some folks online. What? We, we are catching up. We are now at our seven thirty agenda items, so we're making rapid progress. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Hank, am I turning it over to you? And maybe you can introduce the team who's with us tonight and whoever else is online as part of the group for this particular update?
Yes, certainly. And I know that the chair of PBBC, Stuart Chandler, would also like to do a brief introduction.
Absolutely.
So there are two members of the PBBC, Madam Chair, George Kent and Stuart Chandler from Weston and Sampson, Mike Richard and Shane Mark, who's the Assistant Director of the DPW.
All right. And we have Karis online, just.
Yes.
Listening in. I don't know, are we bringing her over or? Sounds good. Stuart, do you want to set this up?
Yeah.
How would, how would you like to do this?
I appreciate that, Madam Chair. I just wanted to preface the hard work that's going to be presented here. I believe this is the first update for the board and it's important to set the context. We know Article twenty-seven back in two thousand twenty-two, town meeting set the stage for doing this feasibility study. And the purpose of this was to determine efficient use of the DP facilities designed to incorporate recommendations and build a construction phase concept for implementation. I think the context is important because the amount of information that will be shared can be perceived as a final report. It's not a final report. It's an update. I know you know this. You guys are used to the process that we go through in these projects. But I think for those listeners online and folks that are attending this meeting, it's important to keep the context of this update. And that's why I wanted to preface it. I will turn it over to our experts, but just to further contextualize it, we selected Weston and Sampson back in February to proceed with the feasibility. And we know Weston and Sampson and the town knows Weston and Sampson. They've done tremendous amount of work. The user group that's been put together with Shane, the DPW and others have put a lot of long, hard hours. There's still some pieces that need to be worked out. So as you go through this, keep in mind, there obviously input is important to these, these folks. But I think, again, this is a challenging project from a lot of different views, but the feasibility is going well. And I guess, Mike, I go turn to you to do that.
You know, Stuart, given your overview, I, I may even want to take it up another level for everybody and put it in a bigger context. One of the other reasons that we embarked on this project was because we are trying to understand the town's fiscal picture going forward at a macro level. And this project previously has been conceived as a one-time event kind of a project. And this particular iteration now, we're looking at feasibility for a DPW project that could be phased with the sense that that may be more easily able to fit within the context of the town's overall budget at different points in time. So we're trying to understand what that strategy would look like. And you were trying to figure out, is that even feasible? So we appreciate the, the group undertaking that work to help us think about the big picture for the town, being able to afford the needs that we have.
And, and I appreciate that. And I want to echo that because I think, again, putting perspective, putting into the contextual framework of what this date's about, those pieces are still being worked out. But hopefully tonight, there'll be enough information that people get a sense of some of the complexities, i.e. DPW growing and spatial needs, the limitations of the property that the town owns, where we can put equipment, where things start to create synergistic operational activities, where they don't and so forth. So I, I think this will be interesting.
You have a presentation put up on the, on the screen here. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you for having us. My name again is Mike Richard. I'm from Weston and Sampson Engineers. And I put together a brief agenda that will just outline what we're going to talk about tonight. So first is, we just want to recap where we've gotten to so far. And then we're going to talk about the site selection and the site test fit. So those are the works that are in progress at the moment. Then we're going to talk about next steps. And then I'm going to turn it over for questions and discussions. But by all means, ask questions as they come up, if that's how you feel comfortable addressing them. What I do want to briefly touch upon is just why we're here. We have presented in the town floor on this. We actually completed the original study back in two thousand sixteen. We're here because of the conditions of the current facility. Some of these conditions are outlined on the, on the slide in front of you. Namely, the building just does not meet code. It doesn't not meet code, doesn't meet today's standards for, from everything for fire suppression to egress and access, number of plumbing fixtures for the employees there, ventilation and safety alarm systems as well. And doesn't meet today's structural code either. And I say that from a perspective of it, it met code at, at one point in time. However, operations have changed and the functions of the DPW has changed in the sense of today's DPW is now a first responder. Back when this was originally constructed, it wasn't. And that's a presidential directive, that's DPW being a first responder. So as we move forward and assess these buildings for their condition and possible renovations, we have to take that into consideration. But probably for, one of the most important aspects, it doesn't meet the size requirements for a modernized DPW operation. And we've done a number of these facilities and experience tells us that when you have a, a space that is compromised and doesn't meet your needs, what you're subject to is you're subject to potential damage of the building, potential damage of your vehicles, potential vehicle, damage of your equipment. And you have multi-million dollars invested in this equipment and your buildings and you don't want to lose that or jeopardize that. We have, in fact, been called out to Needham for structural repairs before. So keep that in mind. Now, we also have, you have, these spaces are also compromising your operations and the efficiencies. And one thing that's also difficult to assess is the intangibles. How does this affect employee morale? And how does that affect or impact retention or attraction of new talent? So there's a lot of other factors that, that go into that, that are really hard to quantify. So with that said, now that we understand why we're here, or we have a reminder of why we're here, the first thing that we did is we talked about the space needs. And the reason that while we did the space needs seven years ago, we wanted to touch upon those again because we needed to better understand what these space needs are. I mean, this is the foundation of everything we're building upon. We want to make sure that we have it right and operations change over time. So I do have a laser pointer, but I don't want to be shining it that way or that way. So if you want me to use it, I will. The, the table on the top right shows the current program that we, that we just, just went through. And what you'll see there is, you'll see the drivers of what we find, the, the largest drivers impacting the space needs. You have your divisions, you have your staff and you have your fleet. Those are what we historically find as the largest drivers of your space needs. And with that, we came out with a program of a hundred and seventeen or close to a hundred eighteen thousand. What we wanted to do is we wanted to compare that to, where, where were we in two thousand sixteen when we did this study? Well, you can see we've increased this, this program by thirty thousand square feet compared to what it was. The reason for that is, well, we've increased the number of divisions. We've added building maintenance and we've added the RTS into the program, thereby increasing the staff and increasing the vehicle count. What we also have is we have, we looked at this a little bit differently. We talked about how we want to parcel this out. Instead of looking at a combined facility, we want to look at these spaces individually for the time being, until we know what groups are going to be combined together. So when you do that, what you have is you have redundancy in space. You might have redundancy in a conference room. You might have redundancy, or you will have redundancy in your utility rooms, your electrical, mechanical, plumbing rooms, et cetera. You will have redundancy in the number of separate buildings that you have. As you combine these facilities, what will happen is you'll get to share those spaces and your space needs will go down. So after we walked through the program, what we did is we started looking at how are these groups going to come together? And we outlined a couple of different scenarios and we put together what we call bubble diagrams, where scenario one was a consolidated operation. And it's very similar to the current, the two thousand sixteen study and how we brought those divisions together. We also looked at satellite by department and what departments users, what department users work well together. And then we looked at hybrid operations, which might be, how does the building, how do these groups or these divisions function under different scenarios? Next slide.
Can I go back one sec?
Yep.
Second. How much space do we currently have?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but that is part of the report that will be coming out at the end.
All right.
It's a very good question. It's always good to know.
So this works for the general charge, is not?
No.
No, that was the two thousand sixteen study.
That was from a study.
That's the study that we're doing right now. Yep.
So that was what, that was what we learned was neither of those are current state, so.
Correct.
Yep. All right, thanks. We'll, we'll hold that question.
Yeah. Thank you. So as we move forward, we started talking about the different sites. And there was a lot of discussion internally with the user group about what sites are we considering? So we decided to take a step back and we decided to take a more comprehensive approach. In other words, we didn't really want to leave any stone unturned, if you will. So we used GIS data and we identified every parcel in town that was government owned. It was two hundred fifty-five parcels. And then we were able to filter those or, or, yeah, filter those out by looking at items such as size. So now we have the program of each individual division. We're able to identify the smallest and we have an idea about how much land use that smallest division will need to occupy. So we're able to look at sites that were above that size in square footage. We're able to look at the owner and filter out those. An example might be the town of Wellesley owns land here in, in Needham. We don't think we have access to that, so we're able to remove that. We filtered out Article ninety-seven or other protected land. Article ninety-seven could, or, or protected land could be a deed restriction, limiting the process's use. We also looked at existing use. Fields were off the table. We also looked at existing use. Uh, fields were off the table, uh, playgrounds were off the table. Using the GIS data, we were also able to look at usable upland area. So in other words, that land that's not in the wetland or in a flood plain. And then we looked at proximity to a butters and the impact that that could have. And we took off, I think, one parcel through that. And that left us with seven parcels. You got the Hillside School, you got Parcel seventy-four, you got the three parcels on Dedham Ave. You got the RTS and the Daily Building. So now we started moving into our test fits. How are these pieces going to come together and using our scenarios that we used before? So some key considerations as we walk through this was there was a desire to keep admin and engineering together. Recycling and solid waste was determined that was going to remain at the RTS for obvious reasons. Building maintenance division was not tied to any division, and they're actually not part of DPW. So, um, they, they have a lot of flexibility. We also wanted to reduce the program at four seventy Dedham Ave. And the reason being is four seventy Dedham Ave has a lot of site constraints in terms of wetlands, riverfront, pond, other access, uh, issues as well. So the group felt by putting as too much into four seventy would really restrict what you're actually able to, what you might have to compromise the program, you might have to compromise something in the, in the layout. And there was a desire to reuse the six bay at four seventy Dedham Ave. So what we did is we took that information and we, the information today, and we laid out these, what we call test fits. And I'm showing them to you as, as, in a flow diagram, on how we, how we looked at them. And what you have is you have the seven sites, uh, labeled in the blue box, the blue or purple, uh, box. And then below that, you have each of the different divisions, and they're in a yellow bubble. The yellow bubble indicates or signifies that that's an existing division that is located on that current site. You can see Hillside School and Parcel seventy-four have a red diamond, meaning those are currently not occupied. So what you're seeing, what you're looking at now on the screen is that is your current operation. An example of one of the test fits that we looked at, and this one, the ones that I'm going to show you are probably were some of the more favorable outcomes. What we did is we took Parks and Forestry and we moved them from four seventy Dedham Ave over to the RTS site. And that's why it's shaded in blue. So in other words, a relocated division, we shaded this blue when we moved it. So in this case, you'll see RTS remains at its current site. Admin and engineering remains at five hundred Dedham Avenue. And Building Maintenance Division remains at, at the Daily Building. And that's a common theme that we'll see in each one of these options. Absolutely.
I have to admit, I feel terrible about this. But I don't know where the Daily Building is.
It's behind the fire station. It's well.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. You're welcome. And then in test fit example B, what we did is we took fleet and we moved them over to the RTS. And this was viewed favorably by the group because fleet doesn't have the same number of staff come to the facility during normal hours. They'll have, they'll have traffic impacts throughout the day or traffic throughout the day, spread out throughout the day as vehicles come, come and go. But you don't have that large influx. At the end of the day, you don't have it at the end of the day. You also have, um, highway moving over to Parcel seventy-four and Hillside Ave. Well, I'm sorry, one of those two, both options are being explored in this case. And in example C, what we've done is we've taken, um, Water and Sewer Division, and we've moved into, uh, four seventy Dedham Ave combined with fleet. And one of the synergies here is, uh, Water, Sewer and Drains does have the second largest, uh, number of vehicles in their fleet. So combining with fleet is, is viewed as advantageous. And then also we looked at Highway and, and Parks and Forestry at a combined facility at either Parcel seventy-four or Hillside Ave. And there's some synergies in the way that, I'm sorry, Hillside School, thank you. And there's some synergies in the way that these departments operate together that is advantageous to keep them together.
Nothing at four.
And nothing at four eighty-four. And then test fit example D is very similar to the twenty sixteen study. However, we're looking at four seventy and four eighty-four combined. And we might be looking at a different phasing approach that was presented or a more phased approach than what was presented in twenty sixteen. So there's a number of considerations here as we look at this. So as we move on to the next steps, what we're going to do is we're going to continue to meet with the user group in the PBC to finalize the preferred concepts. Once that is done, we're going to move into finalizing the existing building assessment. So we've already walked through these buildings, but we want to see what makes sense to go at what location so that we can customize our assessment to what will be going there. Likewise, with the final permitting analysis, we need to know what that square footage is going to be, and we need to know what those concepts are going to be before we finalize our permitting. And then we'll move on to our, our project schedule. And that's going to be everything from the design, the procurement, the construction, and what's most important is the phasing that goes with, um, the temporary operations that might come with the phasing approach or the phased approach. We call it a roadmap. And that's it. Is there any questions?
So, um, when you get to the point of having a preferred concept, when, when do you think you'll sort of have some sense of costs for different alternatives? Is there an assumption that there's no significant difference in the cost that would drive one choice versus another?
So there, that, that's a, that's a very good question. So what we have now is kind of rule of thumbs that we're going to be looking at. Where, where we look at renovation costs as a whole, based on what we've looked, looked at before. Plus, we look at, um, we know building new and what that cost is. So it's, it's a, it's a a large view, if you will, but as we move forward and we, we hone in on what those concepts are or what the master plan is, then we'll be able to fine tune those costs.
Questions, Marcus.
Also, within the cost, depending on which scheme is chosen, there may need to be some temporary facilities. Same approach as currently is happening, uh, with Emory Grover and happened with Police and Fire. And, um, Hillside School is obviously an opportunity should, um, temporary facilities be needed.
If, if it fits in between its current temporary use by the school department and maybe some future temporary use by some other department, but yes.
And my question was about Hillside, kind of where it stands. Some of the, um, concepts had that as potential areas to kind of be. And I know in the past Hillside, and it's only been temporary because it hasn't been really usable as far as for a long-term solution. Because was it the, the contamination of the ground there, or is that all, are we in a much better place?
So that's a different issue. I think, and I think when you're looking at Hillside, you're looking at as a, a site that could be redeveloped for this specific use independent of the school. Is that correct?
All right. Just when I hear Hillside, I always go back to that. I feel like that's always in the back of my head of where we are with that and why it's been temporary for as long as it has.
So it's currently temporary really because, um, it has not been brought up to current building codes since children moved out of it, right? The system that it has underground is a successful system for ameliorating the TCE plume. That part works, okay? But, but it's a question of the rest of the building. If it were to be put into a particular use, it would be, need to be brought up to certain. Okay, in this case, we're looking at it more as a green site that it could be used for this.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Or temporary.
For temporary.
Got it. I may just go back to one point. I think you asked about time. Like this, put you on the spot, Mike. From a project standpoint, these buildings, it's August is hoping for the report, but we may, I'll be eek into September to get the final pieces of the puzzle.
So we might see you back in September sometime. Okay. Other questions?
Yes. Thanks for doing this. And I think it's kind of an irony that the people who build and fix everything for the town have the most broken buildings. So, um, you know, shoemakers kids go there for it. So, um, I think this is, this is long overdue, well worth doing. Um, also in the issue of redundancy, thinking in terms of DPW's first responder, it makes sense. So the, uh, the not one site makes sense. Other one that I'm holding judgment on, like I must get those fits together.
And I know that Shane would love to give anyone a tour if any of the members of the select board have not been in the building. I think it's worth a visit, um, to understand what the constraints are within the current, current facility.
It may be worth mentioning, like Bob, is just on top of that is that the BBC is looking to do a tour are trying to combine several couple of times, but it's been constantly encouraged to appreciate the space, um, and so forth.
So I think if we can get some time set up, please let the board know. We're happy to try and piggyback on some other work that you're already doing.
I wanted to, to add a couple of comments if I could, since it brings a lot of history to the, to this process. We went through this process, of course, in two thousand and sixteen. And, um, there is no easy solution for the DPW. And I, I agree, DPW has been, in, in some senses, from the town's perspective, from our perspective as a citizen, it, it's been neglected, in, in my opinion. And, and we're looking for ways to solve that. We don't think any, anyone should be working in that building that the service vehicles in now, uh, let alone be there on a permanent basis. So we really believe that, that this is necessary. However, there are no easy sites. And one of the difficulties we had back in two thousand and sixteen is the parcel, um, on Great Greendale Avenue.
Parcel seventy-four.
Parcel seventy-four. And it's not going to be easy to make that into a parcel that could be built on. Uh, as you know, uh, we went through that process. It also has, um, from my perspective, I live in that district. And I've already had people come to me saying, when can I go to a meeting and express my desire to not do anything with a DPW site on that, on that site? So I know this, this built up emotions regarding this. And I think we'll have the same thing again. So my question really to the board is, um, I think we need to think about that as a potential issue. As we look at the sites, we've, we've looked at, at the site, assuming it's available, just like the other sites. And I think most of the other sites are available, uh, to us. That particular site, I think it's going to be a difficult one to, to get access to. And I think the board needs to think about that.
So, um, as somebody who's been engaged in the town as long as, I think almost as long as you have, George. But if I go back to, uh, my first election in two thousand and four, the answer is Parcel seventy-four has been the site that has been pulled out of consideration for every project, and Stuart knows this as well. It is a site that I think is important to look at. I think it is a site that could in fact potentially be beneficial here in a way that is not too impactful on that neighborhood. But, but that's a concern, and I think it's worth exploring the feasibility, which is why this, we had a discussion with the chairs of Parks and Rec to say we were interested in looking and, and, and advise them that we were interested in at least looking and considering it. But, but you're right, it is a site that people would prefer to see stay the way it is, which is often the case.
Especially with the highway growth that has occurred, um, that whole area. In fact, Greendale Avenue, the traffic on Greendale Avenue is miserable twice a day. And for most of the neighbors in that area, they don't want anything more to, to come onto Greendale Avenue in terms of traffic. And I know that we're doing a traffic, someone's doing a traffic count on that as well as Central Avenue, I believe. But, um.
Well, all three of us live in that neighborhood, four of us, Kevin too.
There are no easy sites at all, as you know, for just about anything. And that's why we, I think we need to be careful when we look at all of them and ask the question, is that really going to be on the table or off the table?
Yep, it is important. Um, we are not building more land in Needham.
I appreciate the sentence. And you're right, Parcel seventy is a hardworking site as a buffer site now.
So.
If I may, Madam Chair, I'd just like to express to the board as well as everybody listening that the PVC meets every other Tuesday, excuse me, Monday, it's Tuesday for the select board, isn't it? Mondays, um, two times a month. There's a working group for this feasibility project, and I would encourage people to attend now with the amount of information. Information is available to folks. So in this type of issue, this is not to be a big protest kind of environment, it's to get that input. So I would like, I don't know what the right channels are, but I'd like to encourage folks to make sure that they're aware this is an open process in our meetings as well as in the working group. So we can try and iron this out. We're not trying to keep it secret. So please communicate out our meetings as well as the working group. Maybe Hank, you can let people know when the working group is assembled.
As a advocate for, um, greener and greener and greener, I would like to just express that my hope that the town itself, both its buildings, but noticeably, notably its fleet would make some pretty significant change and shift over the next ten years. Precisely the time when we would be moving into enjoying some of these new buildings. So I'd like to just put in my two cents that these new facilities should be well-sighted to take advantage of geothermal and solar. Additionally, I'm hopeful that you're going to need to charge a lot of electric vehicles at these buildings. So I just want to make sure that those, um, potential, but hopefully inevitable changes will be accommodated by all these.
Mayors, Madam Chair. It's a great point. I just want to bring awareness to the fact that if you look at the PSAB building with geothermal, recently the Cogswell building, putting solar on that, we've actually talked about it continuously in the PVC in terms of setting up for environmentally driven kind of buildings. Cogswell building actually is set up well that if it becomes, you know, to take some of the fleet, that's where cars can go get charged, trucks can get charged overnight because of the solar. So we are trying to encourage in our build phase or our design phase, um, that kind of consideration. So I think it's a great point and something we've talked a lot about in PVC.
Groups that accommodate solar are also considerably less expensive than.
Right, but Cogswell is one building where we've actually been talking extensively about it. As much as it's off-season storage, in fact, as more, more cars and more vehicles, I should say, become to charge overnight, it's a perfect spot because of the openness to be able to put something in there and hook right up. So, and Hank is very close to that.
Yes, if I may say something, um, I'd just like to say we've done, I'm very impressed with the DPW team and Weston and Sampson and our working group. As we've had several meetings and a lot of the things that you're discussing as a board are exact conversations that we've had in these meetings of making sure that we're setting ourselves up for solar and future bid builds, that we have plenty of charging stations, looking at alternative means like the geothermal. Uh, so we've had these conversations, so it's great that, to see that we're in tune with what the select board is also messaging to us. And I'm very impressed with the members of the DPW team that are taking a different approach in their outlook. As my understanding was in two thousand and sixteen, the former director of DPW and many of the department heads were very adamant that we had to be together in one building. I think COVID has really changed that outlook in the way that we functioned as a team and as first responders. So our department heads are very open to not having to be co-located. So our department heads are very open to not having to be co-located in one facility because we've proven that through COVID, we've been in separate buildings, that we're in separate buildings, that we function perfectly. So we're looking at a campus approach as part of this process. Because we also realize that if we do that, it may help to phasing this build out. And instead of asking for fifty or sixty million dollars for a mega complex at once, perhaps we might be able to build and phase this out in such a way that it lessens that burden all at one time. So we are really looking at those alternatives in a comprehensive holistic approach to this process.
Any other questions? Any last words? If there are none, then we will look forward to an invitation to go take a tour. And we will look forward to hearing back from you in September. So thank you, we appreciate the update. Terrific, that brings us to the town manager's report, where we have a number of other significant items.
Is the continuation of our conversation about the non-criminal disposition bylaw. And for context, this is a bylaw that allows the town to issue fines instead of criminal charges or against someone who's non-compliant with sections of the bylaw. We had brought this to town meeting in just this past May. And we asked if we referred back to us because we did find a couple of glitches. And so we're combing through it again. But when we had a, you know, probably ten of us sat and looked at it, it was really hard to determine, given that these fines are a deterrent, they're really, other than dogs, there have been almost no fines in the last five years that anybody can even find. So the concept is there's information out there, there's letters, there's warnings that the people can be fined, but we're not actually fining people. So that's, the first thing is that it's a deterrent. The second is three hundred dollars is our maximum. And it's under state law and it's been the maximum for a very long time. So you then have some, while it can be a per occurrence or per day, that could add up. You have some of these items in non-criminal that have low as ten dollars and some that have three hundred. So when we met, we really talked about this notion of the tiered, that three hundred, which is the maximum, and again, could be per day or per occurrence, would really be for some irrevocable harm. So taking a house down without going to the demolition delay or taking trees down, you know, or interfering somewhere in the wetlands. So those would be the three hundred dollar fines. Then there's a number of them that are simply nuisance items. One of them is selling food between the hours of midnight and eight without a permit, you know, there's no real harm. And then there's a moderate impact in the, in the, in the middle. So we were looking at a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, with always the opportunity to warn and always the understanding that that's what we do. Other than there, there are a number of unlicensed dog issues, situations where there are fines issued in that way. There are a couple of items that we think, before we get to the idea of bringing this to town meeting, we are looking at October, but it's not, it's not necessary. So if we can't fix those, there's a number that we're still talking about whether, if they're covered under the general laws, do we really need, you know, if there's no parking in a fire lane, do we really need a bylaw that says you can't park in the fire lane? So we're talking about some of those. And there's a couple that are just, they're very old, but getting rid of them, we're just afraid of the unintended consequence, right? So there's this bike riding on the sidewalk in the business districts and what do we mean by that? And then there's coasting, which, you know, it used to might mean something, but might now mean scooters. And do we, you know, do we want to get rid of it or do we want to keep it? So we're still, hopefully to solve that in August. So we'll have more information for you on those. But really just to hear from you today about the tiered approach, whether it makes more sense to just have these three tiers instead of trying to decide what's thirty, what's fifty, what's a hundred, what's third offense, what's fourth offense, it's just, you know, the flat number and per day or per occurrence.
And, and there's also some recommendations here for, for some specifically to eliminate. And I noticed that some say for discussion. How are, are there some specific things that you want feedback from this board on? You know, is it ones that say for discussion or how do you want? How, what do you really want from, from us?
So the first thing is feedback on the tiers and tonight or, you know, between now and August. We hope to have for you some recommendations on these discussion items. For instance, the first one, three point, one point fourteen, discharge of bow and arrow. Well, this is the one where you don't discharge the bow. So talk, you know, that, that's my, that's on me, I did that. Coasting of a motorized scooter in public, we just want to get more conversation going with chief. Other examples, bicycles on sidewalk, we'll probably have a conversation about that in August. And in fact, it's an item the board members had identified as possibly talking about during the streetscape process or during your retreat. So we may just hold off on that one. Again, obstructing a fire lane, maybe the question was, if it's already in state law, do we need it? And the answer may be yes, so we'll be back to talk to you in August about that. The same with operating a taxi without a permit, these are the ones that, that we're just thinking of. So recommendations to follow on those, on the, whether it should be there. The removals are, you know, it's not, it's not allowed to sell cigarettes by machine in Massachusetts. So that one can come up, that one's.
We don't have any taxi stands left?
We do not. We do not have any taxis.
So fundamentally, I think the three-tiered approach makes a lot of sense. Instead of, you know, figuring out different nickel and diming for all these different things. It is kind of crazy that three hundred dollars is the maximum fine. I, I understand that's set by the state, but I don't think that really constitutes much of a fine for a number of these, particularly if it's an irrevocable, you know, you can't go back and restore it kind of event, but.
Yeah, I would do, I like the small meaning. Makes sense, it's easy to understand. And you're right, most of it would be all warnings.
Yeah.
Great, I would agree, I think it makes a lot of sense. And I think keeping the lowest to a hundred, if it's a deterrent, you know, anything less than a hundred really, what's the point? It's silly.
Okay, we'll be back.
All right.
Our next item is implementing the board's goal to upgrade the town seal to improve graphic quality and historical accuracy. So the board has in front of it a draft of a Needham branding and town seal committee charge and composition. Again, this is for your review and thinking about it, and we can finalize it in August if that's what you'd like to do. There's a couple of premises built into this. One is that the conversation the board had in its goal setting and since that, one of the things that should happen is that the seal should be reserved for the absolute most formal occasions. And that there may be this concept of creating a brand or a logo that could be used on things like architectural details in the hallway, vehicles, T-shirts, those kinds of things. So that's the separation. The second would be the actual creation of a brand logo by the town. This, this notion of consistency in communication that we could, that this committee could also look at in terms of how the town communicates and in what manners, given our new director of communications and community engagement. And then the seal itself, as board members have talked about, the seal, the quality of the seal is, it's currently not one quality seal. In some cases, the image is actually incorrect. And we've tried to weed those out, but it's out there, so the quality is not good. And then really the, the idea of considering whether the seal itself is appropriate in our taking age. So we've recommended the moderator, if you wanted to make an appointment, a select board member, historic, human rights committee, a member of the public and representation from the indigenous community in the area would be helpful in this. We have the possibility of state funding as a earmark to help us with the artwork piece of this and the oversight that we should know when the state budget wraps up. And we've started an inventory of everywhere the seal is being used currently, which is quite a long list. And so we've started that so that we have a sense of really the short, medium and the long. The fact sheet that you have in front of us will be, you know, five minutes change. The architectural details in the hallway behind me would be a longer term. And, you know, all of our vehicles, there's a lot of them, all of them which have seal. So, so there's, you know, this short, medium and long. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, this is another item that we'll bring back in August. And if the board members have any thoughts on composition or charge, we'd be happy to consider them for the next draft.
So people have that information in your packet if you're interested in providing feedback on the charge at this point?
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea. I think, I'll agree, the seal was an old copy from an old copy that was pixelated or pixelated and changed into a vector file. I mean, the quality of the work is back. So we have to tell these to fix that. I love the idea to re-meat the logo for secondary use.
Okay. Can I go back to the fines for just a second? I finally got to the last page of that where I had a note with a question. There's something that says violations of the zoning bylaw, and it's a tier one offense. Now, in theory, to me, violations of the zoning bylaw sounds like they could be fairly significant. So I wondered if there was an example of what a violation of the zoning bylaw was that was a hundred dollar kind of fine worthy thing? I don't know if you know or if. Yeah, stormwater and Board of Health were certainly much larger. But I was like, what makes violations of a zoning bylaw so trivial apparently?
I think it was that the impact are, you know, if there's a building that's built in violation of the zoning bylaw, it has to come down, that a hundred dollar fine.
Is minor relative to what it's going to take for them to remedy their.
Yes, I do have notes and the commissioner was there and I'll double check it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so the third item is the call for the special town meeting. It's summer, that means it's time to call for special town meeting, of course.
Right, so we had cleared with the moderator the date of October thirtieth. I have included in the packet a list of potential items for inclusion. This is not final and in some ways, in many ways, will be informed by the select board's goal setting in early August. So we, the board would call for the meeting, just get, we can get the word out to county members of what the date is. We'll open the warrant on August fifteenth and close it on September twelfth. Rapidly approaching.
So hopefully everybody already has the date marked on their calendars and it's reserved. Perfect.
Chair, I make a motion, select board vote to call for a special town meeting to be held October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three at Needham Town Hall.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five zero, thank you.
I would add, Madam Chair, when, it's often the case at town meeting when people will say, well, let's just push it till October, let's get it done by October, and you realize it's only three months from today. It's, there isn't much time between May, other than things that are catch up or that we intentionally deferred, which a couple of these are, we had intentionally deferred. The next item, this is a really exciting one, municipal electricity aggregation, which town meeting approved are moving forward on. And we have a consultant, Mass Power Choice, that we have engaged with. And we had a, we have a small group that's working on making recommendations to the board on how to implement the municipal electricity aggregation. And there are five items that would require, or we would ask for the board to weigh in on. And again, these are presented tonight for discussion and we can have them voted in August. The first one is the program name and the consensus of our group that I pulled together that included helpfully Mr. Keen and Ms. Dowd and two members of the Climate Action Planning Committee. And the unanimous choice of the working group was Needham Power Choice. And it was very helpful that the consultant has fifteen or twenty other communities and we looked at those names. And this was the clear winner that we would recommend to you. There, it's important in the communication of this program that it have a logo. And the group recommended that somehow there be synergy with the sustainable Needham logo, which is included on the fact sheet. It's a lovely logo and there's, you know, there's a way that they do have designers who can help us look at how we might sort of piggyback on that logo. So that, that would be recommended. The program default structure, this is really the meat of the plan. The committee strongly recommends that, the working group, that the default have some additional green energy in it. So the, the goal of implementing a choice plan is to make some impact. And so if the default is some additional green, then there's a hundred percent green and then there's a basic plan. Those are the three tiers that the committee will be recommending. And then.
Kate, the basic plan, I, I think I recall it's twenty percent, is that correct? Do you know?
The basic would be, the basic would have no additional green purchase in it. It's the.
I agree, no additional green, but I think I understand that the current level is around twenty percent.
Utility provider now.
Yeah.
The default.
Is some green, that's what I'm saying, about twenty percent.
Yeah.
Is, is what's in the pre-existing water kind of, yeah, okay.
Is what we're kind of going through in discussion.
And the, the amount of green that would be in, if the board recommends this default structure, which we're recommending it be called Needham Standard. So the standard would have some additional green, a hundred percent green is what it sounds like. And then Needham Budget would be the one that's the lowest cost for the, for the residents and more analogous to what the utility is providing. The amount of additional green that's in the Needham Standard doesn't have to be decided yet, just more the, the idea of what the, whether there'd be three tiers or two tiers. And then there is the possibility of the town seeking permission to add a tenth of a cent onto the rates in order to, to fund program support for the program, which is, it is becoming increasingly, it's my understanding, increasingly strict in what that could be spent on. And some communities are trying to use it for green energy or climate change programs. But our working group felt that if we wanted to do those programs, we should affirmatively seek either grants for them or appropriations for them, rather than putting it into a rate that's being charged to everyone really without their being able to decide whether to do that or not. The one thing that we thought we should find out is whether the state will allow us to use that tenth of a cent to fund a financial assistance fund if somebody, if, if the board wanted to allow people to access that in order to buy up from the budget to the default. It's an exploration at this point. Even that might be using other people's rates, money on the other people's rates to make choices that they didn't make. So I think there's a, that's the one that's a little complicated right now and really would, would need the board to sort that one. The consultant is trying to find out whether, they've never heard of it being done. So they're going to sort of test the waters and see if they thought it could be done, whether it makes sense to do it or not, is not our current recommendation. Kevin or Kathy, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I think one thing we talked about with the, with the standard rate, which would be the default, right? The standard is the default, otherwise you opt out either to the budget, which is more like current, or to the hundred percent green. But in thinking about the standard. the standard, I think we're trying to get to this sweet spot where there is additional green, but that people would be paying roughly the same as what they're paying today, not paying additional. That was an important kind of guideline for us.
Right. And that's a benefit of aggregate, is that hopefully there'll be, as a larger contract, we can realize the savings, right? Do we use credit? Yeah, leverage savings to go green. But the committee, we crushed it. This did so much. Like, the consultants, they've never had it. Town group works so fast, decides...
They actually followed up on an email saying they've never seen so many recommendations made in one hour. But, but again, Mass Power Choice has done a lot of communities. They had a lot of examples, and it was really easy to see. I, we included the materials. You know, the, the community had the five-word name. It's just, they said the sweet spot's three words. That's all. They've learned a lot. Again, as the board knows, we're in the second tier. We've learned from a lot of what's happened before, and we can just give you back on that.
All right. No vote tonight for special only. So now we understand sort of what direction we're heading.
Can I ask one question?
Yep.
Do you have any sense when this process will be ready for submission? And then what the, what's the state of the state?
Yes.
Given that I think a lot of, a lot of these have been neglected during the pandemic?
Yes. The consultant did say that there's optimism with the new administration, that they'll move faster, but that's remains optimism. We, the current plan would be that there would be a public review of a draft aggregation plan in September, I think, at your first September meeting. So putting together the plan based on the feedback that you provided in August. And then they've included five to 12 months for the DPU to review, which they said was, I think, extremely optimistic. So, but, you know, that's, we're moving expeditiously, and, and the hope is that these will start coming out faster than they have.
Thank you.
Two more items. Okay.
The downtown streetscape priority setting. So we asked the board, as our first focus group, to look at a number of priorities within the streetscape area, which is essentially Linden Street to Morin Street, and to consider on a scale, and the first, and the first, if you wouldn't mind, Miles, for the next one, on this use of the right of way, this is a scale of one to 10. And this is a very unscientific survey created by me. And the result then is that the smallest item is the highest priority. So it's a little counterintuitive.
I was looking, I was like, be sure.
So it goes from the left to the right. The, the point of this, I should reiterate, is to give, we are going to engage some consulting engineers to do concept plans and a kind of competition on what the streetscape could be, to give us and the community and a future committee some, some blue sky about what might happen there, and we can start making some decisions. So if you look at this chart, dedicated bike lanes, safe pedestrian crossings, wider sidewalks, and wayfinding, public art, that's basically where there's sort of a lot of consensus about those are the highest priorities. Ensuring no increased street traffic on the surrounding neighborhoods, kiosks, and, and interestingly, maintaining on-street parking spaces are not the highest priority of most of the board members. And so you see these colors represent rankings submitted by different board members. So I don't think these are surprising. There are, you know, a few surprising items, and there's some concern, some members are more, have a higher priority concern about the timing of traffic through the square and what that impact will be. And I think that's, that's very important. It'll certainly be, there's no question that it will be a high priority for engineers. So, so that's really interesting. Miles, if you wouldn't mind.
So the, this is a detailed preferences from Great Plain Avenue from here, Chapel and Chestnut to Linden, very similar, wider sidewalks and a dedicated bike lane. The next preference, Great Plain Ave, right in the square, dedicated bike lanes and wider sidewalks. On-street parking is not the priority of most of the board members. And then from Great Plain Avenue to Dedham Morin, it's a similar, very similar story. Biking preferences are very, this was really interesting, I thought. Separated lanes on the street was the clear favorite. Marked lanes on the street possibly, but not as, as high, not as high priority as actual separated lanes. And then raised, separated, and shared commuter biking share the road were not the highest priority. So I think there's clear ability for biking on a separated portion of the roadway. Overparking, I mean, if, you know, if I were a consulting engineer trying to design something, that, that would help me figure out what DPW folks call the road diet, right? So that's really helpful. And it's really about, it seems from the, from your views, it's about family biking and recreational biking to stores and shops, and not through commuter biking, which, you know, is unlikely to be. commuters aren't going to be as concerned about the downtown piece. And then funding, no surprise, let's combine all the sources that we have. There, there is some sentiment for using Chapter 90, trying to find grants, and then, you know, full, full town appropriation is the least priority of the board members. The funding preference really was for our benefit and not for the design competition. But it should be really, it should be useful when we see them. So I don't think there's any great surprise here, but I welcome any feedback. And then get people who design surveys to design your surveys. For its purpose, it was perfectly. And I thank you to Miles for making it into bar charts, which made it really easy to read.
Good. And, and we do recognize, I mean, we're a focus group that has a certain perspective that has actually spent some time thinking about these issues. I think if we were to ask other people, we might get different...
Certainly might get different opinions.
Yeah.
But I, I really look forward to the idea of the competition and getting some really, hopefully, new and out-of-the-box ideas kind of on the table for us.
I think this will be really helpful for that purpose. Madam Chair, before you move on to board discussion, I, I just wanted to note that last week, Katie King and I went to the Norfolk County Commissioners where they formally approved our $2 million reservoir sediment removal project. So we have two of our four county projects fully approved, and they are all advanced money. So they come, the money comes to us directly, we don't have to reimburse. We have the second Walker project, which is the outfall that is pending tier two review, so that's very soon. And then the, the big project, about $3 million for relining sewer pipes along 128. We, we keep giving them more information, and I'm hopeful that that will get done maybe by the end of the summer. So it's been, the county has pushed out more than, is it 60%, they say, of the funds? So they're really more than any other county, like to point out. So that it was really great to partner with them, have our picture taken with a big check.
Always a good thing.
Why don't we have a picture of the picture?
I've asked for a picture of the big check. I hadn't seen this before. Their big check is actually a whiteboard that they can keep reusing. Very clever. Very thrifty.
Good idea. Right. That brings us to board discussion. And the first item on our board discussion is to recognize the influential business leaders of color that were highlighted by the Charles River Regional Chamber. This was an initiative of the chamber that they have undertaken for the second time, taking a look at leaders of color throughout the chamber's district. When they did that list, I don't, do not recall at this point how many people were on the overall list, but there were, in fact, 13 individuals highlighted for the town. And shall we go through and read all the names?
Yeah.
I think, I sort of feel like they should get names in the description so people have some sense of where they're connected to the town. Mohamed Ali, CEO of the Needham Based IDG, the world's leading data research and media company for the technology industry. And I, I think I note that he has announced that he is leaving there and going on to some new opportunities, I believe AI-based, but something new. Gilda Barbino, the president of Olin College of Engineering. Francesca Carrington, the vice president of DEI and talent development at Needham-based Shark Ninja. Lennox Chase, director of Needham Bank. Latoya Edwards, the news anchor for NBC 10, Boston and Nessun. She joined NBC 10 Boston Nessun family in their Needham Studios as a morning reporter in 2005. Natasha Espada, founder and principal of Studio NA Architects, member of the Needham Planning Board, the Climate Action Plan Committee, co-chair of Needham's Affordable Housing Planning Committee, and a board member for Needham United Against Racism. Anna Heraldo Kerr, founder and CEO Shades of Success, a Needham-based learning and development organization she founded in 2002, serving a second term as trustee of the Needham Free Public Library and co-founder of the Lived Experiences Project. She amplifies the voices of people of color in Needham. Jay Kim is the executive director of Foundation for Metro West. Seema Thakori Maloney is the founding member and co-chair PR and Communications Committee of the Indian Community of Needham, Icon. She also served on the board of the Needham Educational Foundation as co-president of the Friends of Needham High School Soccer and co-chairs the Parent Talk Semi-Annual Consignment Sale. Jay Spencer, the owner of French Press Bakery and Cafe. Sonal Ullman, the gastroenterologist at Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital in Needham, which is now part of Beth Israel Leahy. I think if I've gotten that correct. Larry Ward, Vice President and Dean of Campus Life, Boston College, and member of the Board of Advisors for BID Hospital in Needham. Karen Holmes Ward, Director of Public Affairs and Community Services at Needham-Based WCVB Channel 5. So congratulations to all these folks. We are so grateful that you're here in Needham, and look forward to seeing more of your contributions to the town and to our community. Any other comments? Yes, Larry is at Babson, absolutely. So he lives in Needham, he works at Babson, many, many close, very close local ties. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to all, absolutely. The next item on our agenda is the Town of Needham Community Standards for Municipal Workplaces. I'm gonna turn this over to our Code of Conduct Subcommittee, but the general idea is that we would hope that anybody who comes into some town facility or is in town has a level of respect for other individuals. That's a mutual form of respect. So Heidi, Kevin, who would like to?
I'll start. I can jump in. But we gathered together a lot of town employees to craft together community standards. And basically, it's sort of, it's something I figured we could post on walls. It's, it's a little more than aspirational. It is holding expectations of how we will work together and how people in the community will come into buildings and work with employees too. So I think as we, we kept it simple, but I think it's direct, a one sheet, one page. And I think it's, creates a standard of, of civil conduct.
Yes, absolutely. Ultimately, we just feel that the community is made up of its residents, staff, patrons, and visitors, and that they all have a responsibility to each other to act in a civil manner. And it's just a reminder, not only to act in a civil manner, but also letting all of those community members know that if they encounter a problem, there is a, is a process to handle it and resolve it, and continue to work together in a civil way. So we hope that people will read it and abide by it and, and uphold it.
And for tonight, this was a matter for discussion only. Feedback, again, is welcome on this. If members of the community do have feedback for the board, we're happy to hear from you. As we always suggest, email selectboard@needhamma.gov, and we will be happy to take those into consideration as we look at this. But the proposed draft is available now. Maybe this is something we could get up via news you need them for, for people. Because it is, it is not just for staff, not just for residents, it really is for all of us in the way that we work together with each other.
Marcus? I just wanted to thank Heidi and Kevin for kind of helping to spearhead this and put this together. I think, you know, in the couple of years that I've been on the board now, I've definitely seen moments where things have definitely gone in a place that, you know, people we weren't proud of, you know, people that we're across from probably weren't proud of. But I think having some kind of standard and accountability piece is important. When I see that, you know, one of the things says repeated or egregious violations. So it's not just if it happens more than once and something happens, but if something's just way out of line, then we can address that and hold those, you know, people or ourselves, you know, accountable for just being decent humans first. And I think, you know, when you lead with that, and you have a measured approach, it makes a heck of a difference in the way that we talk to, how we interact, and how we, you know, serve the community that we're a part of, whether it's from a resident or a constituent standpoint, or from people on the boards and committees. So it's much appreciated.
Catherine?
Yeah, I just want to say that I really like the fact that the tone of this is generally very positive. It's about what we will do. And in particular, the first bullet under together, we assume every person is acting in good faith and with good intentions. I think it's a wonderful starting place.
Great. So we'll be bringing this back for vote in the future with the idea that we will be able to deploy it.
And thank you to Miles for starting the draft.
Absolutely. Thank you, Miles. Committee reports. You got one. All right. Kevin, you're up. Committee reports.
Climate action. Still with the sound of the sirens from the parade, our ears, we met on July 6th. Big question, the opt-in specialized NG code, coming up, discuss that. And then we're ramping up for the greenhouse gas report, the public outreach that will be coming. KLA is also, they have a draft going through that they're sort of checking with the committee on strategies, goals, and actions now forthcoming. So, hold on.
There's more. Yes, we're just at the beginning of that. Any other committees? I don't think we've had any other committees in the last month. All right. If there are no more committees and no more items for discussion, then I would welcome a motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.